Please, if you so kind, we'll call the floor.
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Vaughn.
Present.
Counselor Finch.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor LaFars.
Present.
Counselor Leane.
Present.
Counselor Kamuji. President Hughes.
Present.
Chairman Crowe.
Present.
You get your floor.
Okay, we do have a forum. At this point in time, I would like to open up the public hearing. So we go forward with those folks in attendance that are wishing to speak in favor of this year's budget. Please, for the record, approach the podium and state your name and address.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, some of you have heard me before. I'm Dr. Vincent Binigley, 38-year resident of Quincy, Massachusetts. Long before many who were functioning adults in 1979. My dissertation, which is in public finance, was on a system in the municipal oversight for Massachusetts. I come to you tonight to talk. My sense of content and timing must be impeccable. I come to you to talk about two issues which are relevant or just discussed. That, the pension liabilities and OPEB. They have midterm, long-term, and immediate impact on taxpayers in Massachusetts. I've distributed, I keep forgetting how big this body is. We need to be well presented, I'm sure. So I'm not sure I have enough, but some of my notes are here.
Sir, just to be clear, you're speaking in favor of, correct?
What?
You're speaking in favor of, correct?
In favor of the budget.
Correct.
Point of order. Again, I think that's usually referenced in terms of specifically if there's a specific proposal per se. I don't think there's, I think budget is to just basically get general feedback from the community. So it's hard to characterize its support or against. Obviously, we're all for budgets. So I think it's more just an open public hearing. This is not, for example, this isn't affirmative.
Public hearing.
Yeah, it's a public hearing. It's more to relate to issues and concerns in the budget.
I have to say.
Oh, please.
I'm hoping this will be educational to especially the new councilors. The two issues that I'm bringing up are, one, the city's unfunded pension liability. And I'll get to OPEB. I was about three, flip into the sequence because of the questions that were raised. The city's unfunded pension liability currently stands at approximately $335 million. The table I handed out to you indicates there's only 13 communities in the state with a lower funding ratio as of 2014. The state that comes from the Public Employees Retirement Administration Commission. And also from the 2014 funding audit and valuation report by Stone Consulting. So you can see that as of 2014, only 46% of the liabilities were funded. For historical purposes, in 2007, this could be found in the Stone report. The pension plan was 67% funded. And the approved liability, actually accrued liability was $167 million. So in seven years, the liability is increased by $160 million. And the funding ratio has decreased from 65 to 46. Now, what you find is in this year's budget, you have approximately a $25 million request. Approximately $21 to $22 million of that is intended for paying down the liabilities, the accrued liabilities. Now, prior to the 1990s pension philosophy of pay as you go. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts instituted a program to begin funding them. It's been in place for a few decades. But we see between 2007 and 2016, even in complying with that schedule. The liability, the funding ratio has decreased. The liability has increased. And if you look at the capital rate of return assumed Quincy has among the highest in the state. Stone has done an evaluation report in July of this year, I mean, excuse me, January of this year. It should be out in a couple of months. Based on recent trends in the capital markets. It's probable that the rate of return will be adjusted. Acrued liabilities will increase. Funding ratio may go down. I'm not in the actuary. That's my back of the envelope calculation. So we're paying approximately $22 million. And the faster we go, the behinder we deck. If you look at the schedule, the liability will increase. Now, there is some changes that suggest that the current out, net current outlay for present employees will at least partially cover that for the existing employees. I can't comment on that because there may be some future contingencies, which means we're underfunding that for current employees. But we're making a good effort in that regard. On the issue of OPEB, other public employee benefits. That's generally to deal with the healthcare costs of retired employees. Quincy is not out of the ordinary with regard to addressing this problem. It was a change, there's something called the Government Accounting Standards Board, which first made the pension change, now makes the health benefits change, which requires you to estimate these liabilities and to present it. Currently, the current budget is, provides for a $100,000 increase and brings the reserve up to $1,003,000. When I found the number, by talking to people in the state, I called twice. When the report comes out this summer, the accrued liability for health, OPEB liability will be in excess of $320 million. When combined with the unfunded liabilities for pensions, that, depending upon what the new valuation report suggests, will be between seven, approximately $650 to $700 million. Again, OPEB, you're not exceptional. Everybody else has got the same problem. But what you find is when you take the $22 million, we all pray, I mean, not me. You all praise your predecessors in City Hall. And it's like you should. But let's put this in context. $22 million in pensions, and I called the Director of Finance, he couldn't get your hard number. But perhaps $17 million in health insurance expense are for employees that are no longer employed by the city of Quincy. The concept of defined benefit plans and employee healthcare costs does not fall because it's a faulty design. It fails because of poor administration and a lack of prudent funding. As we're finding now in Chicago, Illinois, other places, by disregarding commitments, you fall further and further behind. Those of you who heard me speak before this body know that I'm going to be the last to say taxes are too high, too low. And also the last to say they're rising too slow. But the reality is, is if you wanted to get on a funding schedule to bring your OPEB fully funded in 20 to 25 years, you're talking about another $20 million a year. So you don't have to fund it. It just keeps growing and growing and growing. Now, I know the president had a child within the last year or two. And it's like, she decides, well, we're going to send that child to Harvard in 18 years. Well, tuition is now $50,000 a year.
Sir.
We'll save for that.
Respectfully, we can kind of...
I'll wrap it up. Okay, so the issue is, the, one thing, you've got these long-term commitments. And the other thing is, for current planning, every employee has a shadow cost that is not reported. Future healthcare benefits, depending upon the calculation perhaps, future pension costs. So it's not just the current budget. There's a shadow expense associated with it.
One more time, for the record, what is your address?
What?
Your address.
Oh, 251 South Central Avenue, from Olson.
Thank you. Next. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Michael.
Mr. Chairman. Members of the council. My name is Michael Chaney, from the 52nd Street, Quincy. I have a number of family members who live in Councilor Lake. My parents, who are elderly, most of you I think know. 92-year-old father, 89-year-old mother, with a 12 CF. And the reason I get up to speak, the reason I come up here, using a dungarees now and a flannel jacket. I really don't, I get dressed up, but I do respect the council that said, come up. Is that I recently read the mayor's budget proposal. And in that proposal, there is a $5 million allocation for purchase and demolish three single-family homes and housing that adjacent to the, the, the brush line, bottom, Louis. In addition to that, there's a paving project that excluded that. In addition to that, a certain portion of money, which was appropriated and not spent, $300,000 was to purchase a Louis parking lot and to utilize that. Well, I need to give you, I guess, a little bit of a history and then tell you the impact of what this is, what's going to happen. I was a city councilor 13 years. During that time, I never once said one point about parking or...
With all due respect, is this related to the fiscal year 2017 budget or is this the mayor's capital improvement? Because I would anticipate to be another hearing on the capital improvement plan. But this hearing is just for the budget.
Okay, well, it must improve portions of the budget because we're improving projects that we've done now. And I don't think that the taxpayers will have to be paying for a public improvement project. So we have very little...
Well, respectfully, I think that this public hearing is specific to the fiscal year 2017.
A point, again, point of order, Mr. Chairman, that again, since I've been coming up here, part of public hearing is simply to allow the public to speak. And when we go down the road trying to, again, target and control what people have to say or base judgment relevance of the decisions it shapes, I think it's just a bad precedent. It's that, and again, the time spent, you know, trying to parse that out, by the time that's done, usually what you have to say, they've said. I don't think there's anything that's, that's dangerous, but particularly a former city councilor of the city of Quincy has to say. So I, for one, would just simply like to let the public come up and speak. We don't have to comment and just let that go.
And like you said, I mean, I respect what Mr. Chaney has to say. I'm just trying to shape it that this public hearing is specifically for the 2017 budget.
Well, let me, let me put it in perspective of the 2017 budget. There's DPW dollars that already got vital that have been expensed on the very project. And that descended. So to that respect, I'd like to speak and say that I oppose the DPW spending money on property, particularly this private property. With respect to any capital improvements that are there, I will come back up and maybe bring a few people with me to talk about how the city intends on tearing people's homes down, taking and tearing them down with public dollars. And have not shown any public need. I guess one of the things that upset me and the reason why I came up here is because we were promised, we being in there, as my parents live in Sponwer away, would promise a public meeting before any decisions were made. I pick up a Patriot ledger and see a complete plan in a budget. No decisions were made with the community. This is a, submitted by the mayor, approved by the city council, period. No public input. And I know I'm going to hear, yes, we have public meetings, or we will have public meetings, after, after that moment had been submitted to the council for approval. So in theory, if you approve tonight, that the public would have no input. Now, in at least the 40 years that I've been there, I've never seen a need. I've never seen any overflow traffic, power backed up, folks can't get down there. Never saw a need. So the question I have to ask is, who is this really for? Why is the city spending $5 million to tear houses down, expand a parking lot, and buy a parking lot? There's only one change that's been made in that neighborhood in the last four or five years. One. And that's that something different, bought a bottom. Now wants, wants to break the deal with the community and sell the bottom. Well, they wanted to put a four-story building there, and the neighborhood wouldn't hear of it. So now the city's going to buy it to get them off the hook because they're counseling up handbricks. And we didn't make a price for it. Now we take out the liability, we take on, we lose taxes, a total of $1 million in taxes in that neighborhood. It's going to be the last one. Who will we take care of? I've heard that, from the what councilor, this is for a regional facility. A regional facility. How's that expand a regional facility if a surge treatment point is there? We're a regional facility. What I'm saying is, we deserve more. So I just ask you consideration whether it's in this budget or your capital improvement budget. But when it comes to making improvements on private lots or purchasing lots, that you take that into consideration and vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Anybody else wishing to speak this evening?
I suppose I'll take it into the circle of Quincy. I'm not so much here to question the budget, just to point out that documents so poorly packaged is to be next to useless. There's a point of comparison. Consider the county of Quincy, the Braintree budget. Its key financial data runs over 230 pages. The same range of budget items data that the Quincy budget is covered with, was covered with much less detail in a highly consolidated 57 pages for an annual budget that is twice the size of Braintree. Braintree provides 110 pages on just operating expenses ranging from bond debt servicing costs to its gasoline budget, as well as 88 pages listing salaries for each and every job slot in the town. There are dozens of pages for the school budget. Quincy has a single-line item to be mounted, so. Quincy's budget further is missing in the headcount, employment department headcounts, which the council asks for every year, which the administration is not being readily available to the public. Most years have laid this lag, providing no same data to you. By contrast, Braintree also provides all manner of significant material within its budget, ranging from all manner of GOR documents to local financial reports, cash expert, local revenues, this, that, and the other. All of which are important to the annual budget and by extension, the operational Braintree. I'm not seeking that Quincy should provide a budget package twice as likely as Braintree. This Quincy budget is twice as large, but you're accepting that a budget of order of the size of Braintree is deeply troubling. It must also be noted that Quincy's budget includes an additional 45-page Part III section, which is ultimately but a short narrative of financial data and a bit of fluff. Which, when I was a teaching assistant for graduate students, this sort of matter of late puffeting to the paper resulted typically likely in a half-grade reduction, even if the rest of the paper was a decent piece of work. Returning back to the core financial, 59 pages. The financial data noted in our, but what was budgeted in 15, 16, and is sought for in 17. A proper budget would include what was budgeted in 15 and what was actually spent. What was budgeted in 16 and as close as possible projections as to what will be spent by June 30 and what was sought for 16. Those data are not hard to provide. In fact, they're easy, unless, as the administration doesn't carry a share of. Other problems within the budget include the eight-page budget preview overview. On one hand, it's but a pretty PowerPoint fluff piece. On the other, it's misleading. Two examples, two examples of misleading items follow. One entails the usual levy, property tax imposed versus the levy tax limit. Graphic, it's in there every year. The administration makes much of not taxing to the max. At the same time, however, it does not acknowledge that given courts, in the way the Prop 2.5 plays out over time across communities, Quincy can, it does tax at a higher percentage of its local total assessed valuations compared to other communities. For example, a Braintree Waymouth tax of their 2.5 max. Their average residential property yields, adjusted for light amounts of value of property or assessed values, is about 10 to 15% lower. Quincy, on the other hand, is paying higher than the state average because, again, it can tax at a higher percentage than the average of other communities, even though it's not taxed at the max. Granted, Braintree has more commercial property than Quincy, and so possesses a stronger tax base. But Waymouth doesn't, so there goes if there's commercial property tax for more. Both Waymouth. Quincy only, uh, next. While the administration, while true, the administration, I'm sorry, I got off on a tax line. City officials assess that they're paying lower than the state average in percent of budget spend on bond debt servicing, about 5.3%. While this is true, at the same time, it fails to address how the city's employment pension is only 47% funded, as this gentleman earlier pointed out. This shortfall is a debt obligation. If one just reallocates a portion of the $25 million allocated towards pension payment to reflect Braintree payment shortfall, to put roughly the 65 or so percent state average, Quincy's so revised view of the debt load is over 8% of the current debt limit, or 8% of the annual spending. That's worrisome. You're saying that your debt load's not that high, and it really is. Someone pointed out on OPEB pensions, there's problems. Finally, while not under consideration tonight, I took a look at the mayor's proposed five-year capital improvement program. While it notes no cost projections, I estimate the plan is likely running more than $200 million. Granted, much of this can be funded, the state can federal fund it, but such is still tax money, as well as an awful lot of money to schedule to spend in a relative short period of time. In fact, this proposal is roughly eight times larger than the mayor's previous original five-year capital plan for five or so years now. That, the mayor is currently seeking to spend upwards of $165 million in mostly locally debt-funded money to redevelop Quincy Center in the coming years. All in all, I hope that you do reconsider the whole of all of these various expenditures proposed by the administration. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak this evening?
Hi, John Roseville, 62 Grand Mall Road. Basically, on the unfunded pension fund, the numbers are way worse than 47%. The asset growth of the retirement fund hasn't grown really at all in 2015. This year, 2016, it hasn't grown at all. I can guarantee you when we get the real numbers, it's below 40%. We're one of the worst in the Commonwealth. We have to be aggressive with that. Unfortunately, you guys cannot add to the budget, you can only subtract from it. So we need to be way more aggressive with paying down that unfunded pension fund because in theory, that would be like taxes, where we're going to have like four more percent this year on top of what the mayor has already said that they're going to go up. What's going to happen is either next year or the following year, we're going to see taxes go up like 10 or 15% in one year. And the taxpayers of Quincy cannot afford that. So it has to be put in equal steps. And you guys rarely have to look into the management of your retirement pension fund because it's not anything profitable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak this evening? Anybody else wishing to speak this evening, second call? Third and final call, anybody else wishing to speak this evening? If you're in attendance, thank you to those folks who came on, participated in the dialogue, or if you are sitting in the audience. And I would like to sign the paper in the back, whether in favor or opposed to the fiscal year 2017 budget. I would just like to point out that that opportunity is available. So at this point in time, I would call the public hearing closed. 82? Okay. I'd like to reopen the, the portion of the meeting, if you counsel, or 2016-082. And send, if you so kind, to join us. I believe that Counselor Kamuji has the floor.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you for being here tonight. Couple of questions, I just want to go over with you. You were discussing, and I think you started to talk to somebody else about over the 17 as well. But you said some of the things that the rating agencies look at are the way in which the debt is amortized. And so are there other options that we're not utilizing? What are the, what are the amortization strategies that are available to a municipality?
Well. There's some, they're utilizing all what's permissible by law, so...
Are we utilizing any that are impermissible by law?
No.
Okay.
There's still...
Could you get that up there?
You can't do that. Fine, councilor, I wouldn't give a really thing on that debt. But you're using a combination of two things based on what you're trying to accomplish for purposes. So for example, DIF, you've got special legislation that allows you to renew notes longer than you generally can.
When you say renew notes, essentially refinance or dip back into the overall DIF pool, if you will?
No, you've basically spent the money that you authorized for debt at this point. You're, you're renewing notes annually and starting to permanently finance the oldest ones. And ideally, you will structure the amortization to mirror the revenue that's being captured in that history.
So whenever I have a conversation with you, Mike, number one goal is to get information. My number two goal is to not say anything that embarrasses myself. So I'm treading into the embarrassment area now. But, so explain to me how, what the amortization is for the general obligation debt that we currently have.
Okay, so some of that debt is based, is structured to look like a mortgage payment, where each payment is approximately the same throughout the life of the bond. Some of the payments, that's, each payment in principal and interest. Some of it is...
How long do we have that over?
It depends, each project, each project is structured separately from each other project. So if you've got a...
Give me a range of what we currently have on the table.
Probably from five years to 30 years. So short-term, based on the useful life, right, of each project. So if it's equipment that's only going to last for five years, it'll be structured to be paid back in five years. So then when you go to replace it, it's already prepaid for, and you can replace it with another set of bonds.
My former colleague, Councilor McNeely, was very sharp and always pointing out the lifespan of essentially what we'd be using, like, having a financial background to argue. But so, things like the capital improvement plan from 2014, that would be a long-term amortization, correct?
Correct.
All right. Okay, so go on, I kind of got you off, please.
Well, as I said, the laws for each purpose is spelled out as to how, how many years you can pay back debt for different purpose bonds and what purposes you can bond for. And if you come up with a purpose that you can't bond for, then you need special legislation to be able to do something like that.
So now circle back to the DIF debt.
Yep.
I don't want to make the night about debt, but so, but it plays such an important part of what's on the horizon for the city. I think it adds to coming to any discussion of our, of our debt, you know, and our bonds for the future. So you were saying that, can you, explain what you were just saying about that we're re-engaging the DIF?
So when the, when the city authorized an aggregate of $40 million for land acquisition and debt...
It was essentially a line credit that the city could then go out and grab as needed.
You authorized bonds for that amount.
Right.
And piecemeal issued them in the form of a short-term note. And you've got legislation that allowed those notes to be renewed for, the DIF bonds can go for 30 years. And they have to be reduced by the term of any yield that's been outstanding. And you've got legislation that allowed, because of the delays and things associated with the DIF, you've got legislation that allowed each of the DIF notes to be renewed for up to 10 years.
So nine?
So right now, the city is on a schedule to start to pay back, to, the DIFs, the DIF notes were... DIP notes were issued over the period of the last ten years. And so the city, as the ten-year date comes up, is in the process of structuring bond for twenty years, or thirty years minus the term of the notes, for a ton of what was issued to accomplish what's been accomplished so far relative to the DIP, the DIP projects.
Sure, and what are we paying on the DIP debt currently? We paying principal and interest?
You're not, you're just beginning to start to pay back principal on a little bit as you're paying interest, short-term interest, which are low, which generally has been pretty low.
And we're coming up to the forty-million-dollar debt cap, right, or, you know?
Yeah, you've met that.
We've met that, but I don't think we've expended it all. I think there's...
Maybe not.
There's a little, yeah, there's a little bit, but...
You borrowed it, you might not spend it all.
Okay. So what, so I don't see a breakdown anywhere in anything I've been provided, and maybe I've been provided this information in the past, and I just don't have it in front of me. But what is the, what is the DIP cost, the DIP debt cost currently, say fiscal year seventeen, fiscal year sixteen?
Fiscal year sixteen, about half a million dollars. Fiscal seventeen, about eight-hundred thousand, that's estimated.
Why is that estimated?
Because it hasn't been borrowed yet. Oh, it's, you know, it's being renewed at rates that you haven't gotten yet, so...
So we've already borrowed it, we just haven't renewed it yet? As we're allowed to do by...
Correct. There's a lot of different pieces of it, but each gets renewed at the same time. The dollars ture together, it gets rolling together. It's borrowed at different times, but it gets renewed together, and those estimates as to what it might cost. Again, that's not a final structure. As the DIP, as the development takes further place, the revenue stream might dictate how it gets paid back. So then if there's more revenues than anticipated, there's an opportunity to pay more back sooner on that. Or if it's slow, there's the ability to not necessarily extend the term, but to change how the principal is paid back on that debt. So it's a moving, it's a plan that gets revisited, and will get revisited over the next ten years.
So if there's a revenue shortfall in terms of repaying the DIP debt, the method of covering that revenue shortfall would be a restructuring of principal payments, not, not a shifting from, not a shifting over into just the street budget money?
In fact, the plan is not going to general fund subsidizing.
Right.
And, you know, that would be structured to pay itself back.
So let me just throw something out there, and tell me if this makes sense to you, but... So fiscal year seventeen, eight-hundred thousand dollars is due on the DIP bonds, repaying, turning to payment. So if we didn't have the DIP bonds, that eight-hundred thousand dollars would be available for the general budget, right, for the general fund?
Yes.
Okay. So we talk often up here, or it's often talked about up here, that no taxpayer money is going to go into paying the DIP bonds, it's only going to be the growth that is achieved due to the development of downtown, right?
Correct.
But if it wasn't for the DIP debt, the growth that was happening downtown would otherwise go into the general fund, full available fund.
Correct.
Okay. So it's kind of a, the way I look at it is, it's not a, it's not a burden on the taxpayer on the front end, but more of a burden on the taxpayer on the back end, in terms of, that's money. So if you look at, for instance, and this is a debate we've had up here, the growth of downtown, before a single shovel went in the ground, other than a ceremonial shovel, there was growth in the downtown, because there's natural growth in any real estate market, you know, and every year, our deal waiting is borrowing some, some blips that the country's gone through, but real estate's gonna rise.
It doesn't have to be all the growth, it can be just the growth to pay the debt service, I mean, there's some flexibility there also, so...
Right, but what I'm saying is, so, I mean, we have growth downtown, whether we built anything or not, there's going to be growth in the assessed value of downtown. So that assessed growth, the value of that assessed growth would mean increase in tax revenue to the city, just by the natural appreciation of real estate in the downtown. We are borrowing against that natural growth in the real estate, as well as what we hope will be an encouraged economic development growth from the expenditure of money.
Well, do you just, the incremental growth that's being...
I'm sorry, say that again.
It's the incremental growth that's being captured.
Right, through the, through the debt.
Through the incremental growth of the growth between half percent.
Right. No, I don't, see, I disagree with that, actually. I'm not gonna debate you on that, because it's really not, but I disagree with that, because we've had, because we had a presentation the last time, I think, I forget why it was before the council, but it was before anything had broken ground on downtown, and we were showing growth.
Right.
Which was the only possible way that could be growth, before a single building was built downtown, is the natural appreciation of the downtown real estate.
Right.
And that wasn't discounted, that was presented to us as showing that, that the downtown is growing, and therefore we can support additional DIP funds. I believe it was around the time that Ray gave their presentation, but I won't go any further down this line here, but...
It was intended, it was just the incremental growth, wasn't above the normal growth of two-and-a-half percent, because a quarter and a half allows you to increase your levy by two-and-a-half percent, plus a certain percentage of new growth. And the debt, the intent was to capture the incremental growth from the new growth that's occurring on account of the DIP dis...
So I want to talk to you about debt, looking backward and looking forward, to get an understanding of where we're at, where we're headed. Our budget books for the last, I don't know, five or six years, five years, have included the current projected debt payment, service payment. For some reason, the fiscal year seventeen budget doesn't include that information. But what I've pieced together from my previous budget books, and I want to use two dates, 2025 and 2020, as dates, as benchmarks. In 2012, March 30th, 2012, we were, we were told that the 2020 debt service was going to, and obviously, these are estimates, because things change at the time, was, was ten-point-five million. In 2025, it would be eight-point-five million. I don't know what it is in 2017, I don't know if you have those numbers.
It's really close to that.
Well, in fiscal year sixteen budget book, 2020 went up by three million, and 2025 debt service went up by one-and-a-half million. So I don't know what it is now, if it was still on track with the ten million for 2025, and the three-point-five, I'm sorry, thirteen-point-five or thirteen million for the 2020 number. Do you have fiscal year seventeen numbers for, for our projected debt service in 2025 and 2020?
Well, I do.
What are those numbers?
For which year?
Start with 2020.
I have net, some dedicated revenue sources to offset debt service on existing, I've got existing gross debt service of twelve-point-three-nine, but I've got it netting down to about eleven-point-four right. And that includes short-term, that includes the DIP, which is self-supporting, so it's got a bunch of self-supporting, I've got, you know, that CPA offsets, that, so there's things to offset the gross amount, I've got a net amount of about eleven-point-four, which is very far off, four years later on the original estimate of, where am I paying? Twenty-twenty-five is the same thing, pretty close to what you just said back in 2012.
What is it for current?
Twenty-twenty-five, about a net of eight-point-seven million.
All right, so I'm not clear on why...
I can't remember, what number you just said, what number did you have for 2025?
For 2025, in fiscal year sixteen, we were told it was ten million, in fiscal year fifteen, we were told it was projected at ten million, in fiscal year fourteen, it wasn't, we didn't go that far out to 2025, but you gave us a presentation on May 1st, 2014, where you told us it would be increased by two-point-three million, and if you add that to the March 30th, 2012 presentation, that was eight-point-five million, so that would add up to about ten-point-seven million, which would have been in line with the fifty.
Oh, I've got gross of ten, ten million, one eighteen, four thirty-five.
Currently?
Currently, existing.
Okay, so I guess these are gross numbers, so I guess these are gross numbers that were previously presented, so ten-point-one, you're saying now?
Ten million, one eighteen, yeah.
Okay, so that's, and what's the gross number?
That's existing tax-supported debt service.
And what's the gross number for existing tax-supported debt service for 2020?
Long-term, the existing gross for 2020, twelve million, three twenty.
Okay, so that went down, why would it go down from what you get to the next by, you know, a million and a half dollars? What could, what could that gap here tell you?
I don't know, the original debt quoted exactly, you know, the city's been issuing debt subsequent to 2012, they probably didn't issue exactly how...
No, I mean, this is from fiscal year sixteen, so this time last year, in my budget book, it said the debt service payment for 2020 would be thirteen-point-five.
Well, it says refunded debt to achieve interest savings, the city has issued debt, probably in a slightly different structure than it originally might have been anticipated, and at probably a different rate than was originally anticipated, but, you know, this is, when we look at things like this with the city, it's to get a pretty close approximation based on a lot of different assumptions, and if the assumptions change, the numbers are gonna change.
Right, which I think is, is good, I'm not, I'm not trying to put gotcha here, I just, I think when we're, every year when we're presented with information about what our projected debt service is, I think it's healthy to look back at the numbers that were previously projected, to see if we're, if, you know, if we're following that line, if it looks like the things that we're saying, you know, you can rely on numbers predicted into the future if in the past they have proven to be accurate, and I think that these, these show to some degree that they have been accurate. What is the projected debt service in 2025, in 2020, if we pass this five-year capital improvement plan?
I don't know, I haven't seen, I haven't seen detail of that, I don't even...
I haven't seen a detail of it either.
Well, in that, we've made different assumptions with the city, the city's looking at different options for itself, and, you know, the city's been meeting regularly, we only, you know, we provide information, you know, every couple of months to the city, so the city's using that to look at different things. We have to get our heads into that and match up with what the city's thinking and doing.
In terms of a dollar mark?
To give you a better, yeah, yeah, yes.
And I, so I've, I've kept this apparently for over four years in my desk, which is something that you prepared for us when we, it's called Plan Twenty-Six, does that have, you know, is that something?
Sounds familiar.
Yeah, it says Plan Twenty-Six, I don't know if that's a term you've used, but it's a whole, it's a chart of our debt, and it literally walks through each piece of debt that we have, what our payments are on an annual basis, and it's incredibly useful, I refer to it often, but it's kind of like a cheat sheet to what our debt is and what our projected debt is. It's got CPA, everything on here that we've borrowed from for the past, I mean, it's got stuff that's being paid off in 2016.
That's everything you have outstanding, had outstanding at the time that...
Right, right, so I, so I guess what I'm suggesting, or asking, requesting, as we move forward with this, this new capital improvement plan, and then what you did in 2014, in a nineteen-page document, of which I clearly revalued this page, you showed us what the level of debt service schedule would be on that with the addition of that capital improvement plan, right? So was able, we're able to take, you know, one piece of data, add the other piece of data, and see where we're going to be moving forward if we supported what was asked of at the time, which this council did. So as we move forward, and I trust you'll be back, hopefully, or at least you'll send a report of some sort, as it relates to the proposed five-year capital improvement plan, if we get something similar that updates us on where our debt is on everything, and then as well as what the difference would be in adding whatever the amount the mayor ends up requesting with that capital improvement. Is that a yes? That was kind of a request?
Uh, it's a yes.
Okay, all right. And then just, I'm almost on Mr. Chairman. Our current excess levy capacity is twenty-three million dollars?
That was what it was in fiscal sixteen.
Right, so we don't know what it is now?
I don't, but the city might have an idea, but I don't, I don't know if it's higher or lower than the new service initiation.
The chairman's...
It's the chairman who... No, we expect it to be in that same range.
About twenty-three million?
In that range, if not more.
All right, do you know, so I, we always play this fun game, you come up there and say, well, you have all this excess levy capacity, we all cringe, because, you know, we are elected, talking about taxing levy capacity is not something a person who wants to knock on people's doors, or not have eggs thrown at them, would proffer. So, but your, it remains your professional opinion that we are not taxing enough, or that as a city financially, we're taxing more?
I don't really want to put it that way.
All right, put it however you want. You want to see him on the deck, or...
No, I think that the, the city has certain goals. At a minimum, I would think that one goal might be to maintain the current double A-plus rating. And so when I start looking at what it would take to do that, it's, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna take some, you know, it's gonna take some effort to increase reserves, an effort to establish the OPEC trust fund in some more meaningful way over some period of time, I don't know what period of time that is, not gonna happen in one year. It's gonna be something that's incremental, and the city is, is going to need to maintain reserves and grow them as a percent of the budget each year, so they maintain whatever that percent is, as the city arrives at what is the appropriate amount that, that they can sustain going forward. And so from my perspective...
Reserves is the same as sequestration, right?
Yeah, reserves, free cash, stabilization, unassigned fund balance, all of that, total fund balance, that's all the reserves, plus your unused levy capacity, which accounts as an unused reserve.
Because the way banks are at it is, they get into trouble, they can always just tax right off.
Well, they don't, you don't get as much credit as if it was already taxed.
Right.
But it's there, and the assumption is that if you had to access it, that you would access it for a purpose, and if you never use it, and there's a stubbornness to using it, then there you stop getting any kind of credit for being there as additional reserve. But you are getting right now a positive, in addition to the reserves you actually have, you're getting some positive factor associated with the unused levy capacity with your debt. What I was suggesting is that if you look at the next five years of what you're trying to accomplish as a city, then where does the unused levy capacity fit into that? And I think it's a question that the city should examine and decide whether or not, you know, for your operating expenses and/or for your unfunded pension or your unfunded OPEC, whether or not you need to do more. And whether or not, you know, it's a balancing act, whether or not you can, you know, it's a fair request with, you know, if the, if the taxpayer would think it was a fair request that the city was taxing itself to move it, if you want to accomplish what it wants to accomplish. I don't have, you know, each community is different, and each community has its own set of reasons why they want to do things the way they do it, and I'm not here to say one is right or wrong, but maintaining, creating a situation for yourself that is sustainable going forward, that's structurally balanced, that maintains the double A-plus rating, unless the goal is to become stronger, in which you'd have to do more, but if the goal is to maintain that, then, you know, there's certain actions that the city can take to try to, you know, do everything it can for itself, and some part of that might be taxing unused, a little bit of that unused levy capacity, a little bit each year.
And that raises a good question for me, because, I mean, we set the policy, the city council, the mayor sets the policy through this budget, through the, through the things we do financially, and this budget is the number-one policy document that governs the city of Quincy, it's most important thing we do as a council. So I'm always, you know, I, I always struggle with a capital improvement plan, because there's never a capital improvement plan that I, I look at that I, that I would say, oh, we don't need every single thing in there, but the question becomes, is borrowing that money the appropriate policy prescription? You know, is it, does it make more sense to borrow that, or is that something paving streets or replacing fire engines? Is that something that we should be using stabilization money for, free cash? Or is it something that should be built into the budget? And that's a struggle, I think, it's a policy question, I don't think it's something you can answer, but I look at, you know, this five-year capital improvement plan, it doesn't currently have any numbers attached, you know, I'm gonna guess that's somewhere between the neighborhood of forty and sixty million dollars of wish list in there, and when you tell me that we have an excess levy capacity of twenty-three million... levy capacity of $23 million, a five-year capital improvement plan would be half if we were taxed to that, to that levy. So $23 million over five years would be 100, 150 million dollars. If this capital improvement plan is $60 million, there'd be money left over. So the question is, does it make more sense to tax? You know, because I, I, because I think sometimes we get to, it's like, um, uh, it's like, what's that, that game, Three Card Monte or something? You move the money around so much, and if you don't realize how much the burden, how much the burden is, uh, that it has to be paid back. Um, so that's what I always worry about with capital improvements. With any time we borrow money, anytime we're bonding, uh, it, it, it's a struggle for me personally, uh, in my capacity up here. But, um, we have other, we have a policy right now, at least that's been presented to us in the last two years or so, for the downtown, that suggests we're gonna borrow a lot more money. So the only thing that this council's received thus far about the future of downtown, the last time we received a presentation, I think, uh, March 2nd, 2015. So, uh, about a year ago, 14 months ago. And that plan calls for 116 million dollars of additional borrowing. I presume it's mostly DIF money. I'm not entirely sure. Um, but so that has to play in terms, in our minds, in terms of, we already have a policy before us. Whether or not this council adopts that policy or not is up to the body. But the current policy before us is that we're gonna borrow 116 million dollars for the redevelopment of downtown. Um, and I'm wondering how that plays into the, the rating agencies' view, you know, our, our rating. Um, and again, we've got some time on that. I think it's phase four, which would be the last 34 million dollars of that 116 million dollars of additional borrowing for downtown. That phase four is 2024. But it, but it's interesting that we're using 2024 there and this, this other number, uh, this other date of 2025, and we're looking at our, at our numbers going out forward. That, that doesn't include this because it's non-existent yet, right?
Well, it's numbers that I, we, during our time up there, we included the debt.
Right.
But, I mean.
It didn't include DIF at all, even the current debt?
No.
Right, okay.
I think that if you're, uh, you know, when you're looking at all the different capital needs of the city, to the extent that you've got short-term capital needs like cruisers and things like that, a lot of times those short-term needs are paid for with cash. They're recurring. If you can afford it, if you can afford a certain amount for streets every single year, if that makes sense. I mean, the reason why people, you know, issuing bonds, uh, one, you can have everybody pay it back over the term that the facility is gonna last for. I mean, most of the schools that are being rebuilt these days last a lot longer than the third-year term they're allowed to be reconstructed for. Why, you know, you wouldn't want the people that live in Quincy this, in the next five years to pay an inordinate share of the debt that's gonna last for the next 30 years. The other thing is that interest rate on bonds, third-year debt right now is probably 3%. So, I mean, that's, that's a great, I, it's likely that you'll make money on, on that if there's any kind of inflation in the future. So I, you wouldn't want to pay for your debt with cash unless you're so wealthy that money was no object. But, I mean, you've got to, you need to plan a policy for different types of debt. And first, you have to look at your capacity. And it does get back into that whole question of the unused levy capacity. Um, you know, people living Quincy probably think taxes are high.
No one's ever complained since too loud.
Well, and so, you know, it's just, it's, it's a question. And maybe if we provide some comps, you can take a look and see.
Yeah, I think that information that Council President Hughes asked will be helpful. And I appreciate you and the back and forth. We have a lot of things going on, obviously, in the city, and, you know, debt's a big part of it, DIF, downtown's a big part of it. And, you know, I appreciate it straight a little bit, I think, from just the budget. But I, but I think it all comes back together. And let me just end with this one last question. Do you, is our current debt, is it tying our hands for the future at all? Or is, are you comfortable with our debt level? I mean, what, what I wouldn't want to do is take votes up here as a council that in five, 10 years, when someone else is sitting here and, and there's, you know, different people being in the city, uh, their hands are tied because their debt services is, is, is binding them to have to raise taxes or have to raise taxes to the amount that we want to.
What debt monitors we've worked with the city on putting together don't show the debt increasing so much. It's trying to manage something that could be afforded within the regular budget. I think what might be tying the city's hands a little bit is not using the unused levy across the area. You leave an offer on the table by leaving that behind every year. And I think most people don't understand that, um, that that's what's happening. But, I mean, you could, you know, you talk about paying for things with cash. You would never, I, I, you know, I think the reality is you wouldn't tax all of what's been left on the table. But if you taxed any of it, you know, that'd be, that was less debt that you have to sell.
I can tell you that people don't understand that. And they don't, that's not something of using, pat you on the back, go, "Council, you're doing a great job because you're not taxing me to the fullest you could possibly tax me." That's not something that's ever won someone over. When they try and pitch that to, that, "Yellow, I get taxes a high." But it could be a lot higher. Yeah, that's not something that's winning people over. So, um, and again, this is where, I knew it would eventually come up. It's a fundamental difference that you and I have here. But, um, I, I do, I do think when we're talking about debt, that we have to remember that to pay for it, taxes have to go up in the future. And it's just.
Well, if you structure the debt to come off as you're adding more debt on, it doesn't have to go up on account of debt. It's gonna go up on account of funding your unfunded pension and funding your OPEB life. It'll be a lot faster than it's gonna go up to pay the debt service on the month I'm talking about.
Right.
Um, and it's gonna go up a lot faster on account of, you know, school salaries and police and fire, DPW and all those salaries and other kinds of costs that are being negotiated and, you know, other kinds of mandates that are unfunded. Um, so that's all impacting as well. And it's, it's, you know, it's all competing for the same dollars. So if you limit the dollars, I'm not saying that you should tax all the unused levy capacity. I, I'm saying though that.
I don't know. When I pitch it to people, I'm like, there's this woman who comes up every year, says we should be taxing you to the.
Well, it's hard not to notice it. It's been growing.
Yeah.
And I can appreciate those. I, I can appreciate that, you know, that it's hard. It's a hard discussion because I know that there's gonna shift also in, to the, to the residential, uh, to the residents in terms of the, the burden of taxes, or the share of the taxes. So I, I, I don't have the right answer. I'm suggesting things that the city itself should be looking at and evaluating until conclusion as to whether or not it makes sense to tax more, a little bit more, a lot, a little bit.
And I, I appreciate that. I always, I always find conversations with you and government councils, uh, one of the most informative in terms of dictating policies that we put forward as a city and how we think about finances. Again, it's the, the budget is the most important thing that this council does. One of the most important things, probably the most important thing. Uh, and it's important to keep the debt and taxes and everything in mind when we're, when we're voting in the budget. And having you come off is very informative. So thank you for your time. Look forward again to additional information. And I, and I trust we'll speak again before we have to vote on the capital improvement plan. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Any further questions for, um, Cindy? I guess to take home and thank you so much, you know, you're always a breath of institutional knowledge. We do appreciate that, um, in terms of, you know, next steps, follow-up items, I don't know if speaking to you or, uh, Mr. Walker, but I think it was pretty clear. We articulated here this evening that we're looking for a comparative and also a narrative in terms of what other city may be somewhat, you know, allowed to also take comparison. Also, some sort of modeling as it relates to the proposed capital improvement plan. And, uh, Council Counselor, you have pointed out, you know, updated debt service schedule. I feel like I've heard it, but I'll just ask it. I'm guessing this is one of many conversations that we'll continue to have. Um, and I'm assuming that we'll be afforded the ability to, uh, to engage as we move forward with these financial decisions. So I do appreciate you, um, for that. You gave us an update. Hopefully that wasn't informative. Um, I didn't want to go to the full budget airing without, uh, recognizing in the audience, Richard Manley. Richard is the, uh, partner at, uh, Lock and Lord, who, and he acts as our bond counsel. So Richard, I, I'd refer you, uh, obviously at voting, if you wanted to come up and introduce yourself, that's a little way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. I'd really come along to, uh, to support, uh, you know, the members as they might have had questions regarding the, uh, the legal parameters against which Cindy and her folks need to, uh, need to work. And, uh, what we do, uh, for the city is, is really just oversee the proceedings, um, you know, from the initiation of loan lines and so forth in front of you all. And then, Councilor Xerex told, we handle the legal, um, matters as, as, as needed to do that. Uh, I know you've had plenty of time dealing with these. I have lots of other things to cover, so I'm perfectly happy to, to discuss questions of legal nature that you might have to require for this anytime. Um, but I can, I can also certainly get out of the way so you can get on to more important things tonight.
Any, Counselor, anything?
Not, not so much a question, but I know you've been helpful in the past, but to just put this out there in terms of our ability to contact you in the future, is if we have some question about specific expenditures or types of expenditures under a bond, and whether, you know, we have concerns whether the bond language actually authorizes that type of expenditure, you're available to.
Oh, yes, we've had some conversations.
Yeah.
In the past, sure, right? Normally, just this to sort of make sure that we handle it the right way, uh, we potentially might get a call from the administration when the question, uh, you know, that you might pose, and that's often what we do. But we've certainly talked together on a few things in the past, and that's fine.
So we can, we can have access to if we have a question?
Yeah, I think, I think that that's what's been consistent in passing, although, uh, it might be best to kind of coordinate so, uh, we don't run up the bill.
Oh, no, okay.
On the other hand.
I don't want to see my name reflected in a line item.
That's good. So, yeah, Big Someone, Cindy was told us it sounds like you can just increase on levy capacity a little bit, and we can talk all day long.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further questions for Counselor Manley? Uh, we appreciate you coming here this evening and offering up your services going forward. Um, thank you again for the financial team that came in here. At this point, it's, uh, time to transition into the presentation, uh, departmental presentation of the 2017 City of Quincy Budget. Would just remind every counselor that we are not in a position for a charter to add any NQ a particular, uh, budget while we're in a position to, uh, to board cuts. So with that, and I would encourage any and all questions. There is no silly question in this country. That's, that's why we're here. So, um, without further ado, Mark Cavanaugh, Director of Finance, Mark, it's yours. If you can find, excuse me, you can find this in section two of your budget, on page four.
Just wait for it. You're gonna do this presentation on revenue first, right?
Revenue.
Right.
Yes, where, Counselor, I have a one-page handout that I think will be helpful. So I'll just, uh, send that up.
Thank you.
Lord, you're with us, Captain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Counselors. Uh, in the fiscal 2017 budget presentation last week, uh, the mayor referenced on, on page eight of his presentation a pie chart, which, uh, pictures the revenue sources, the main funding sources that the city relies upon. Uh, state aid makes up about 16.3% of our revenue sources. Property taxes makes up another 74.2% of the total. And local receipts, which were slated to begin with this evening, makes up a little under 10%, about 9.5% of the total. State aid is set by the legislature. It's a legislative formula which has been in, uh, operation for decades at this point. It's agreed upon by both the executive branch and the legislative branch. We work with our, uh, state delegation. We get updates from time to time. Periodically, we get them from the governor. And at this particular point in time, uh, we're, we're receiving some good news. The budget is in conference committee. And right now, it looks like Quincy would be set to receive about 46.8 million if that holds up in conference committee. Last year, we received 45.7 million. So it'd be a 1.1 million dollar increase in state aid. Uh, property taxes, as you know, are set in late fall, often first week of December. Uh, it's after our real estate values have been certified by DOR, and the amount of the levy necessary to be raised by the city is computed in the tax rate recap. We, we complicate that in the city auditor's help as well as our independent accountants. That also has to be certified by the DOR before a tax rate is set. So together, those first two categories, state aid and property taxes, make up a little over 90% of our revenue source. The third piece, the smallest piece, but certainly not insignificant, the amount we'll, uh, begin with this evening is our local receipts. We track receipts throughout the year. I get a weekly report. Susan tracks them as well. We communicate when we see an issue or a particular problem.
Counselor, thank you. Excuse me, Mark. I just wanted, before we get into, I want to make sure it's clear. The state budget you referenced in the FY17 budget.
Is FY17 the local aid portion?
The local aid portion.
Yes, what the state would give to Quincy.
It's not in conference because it hasn't been considered. Senate budget is gonna be announced in a couple of weeks.
Okay. I thought it was in conference committee at this point.
No, it's not. So the only one that could be out is the House budget. So the good news is the House budget is.
The 46.8. That's the last number I got. I thought the, uh, communication from DOR had it in conference committee at this point.
No, well, not the FY17. No, that's definitely not. Because again, the state's already announced.
Thank you, correct. Thank you, Counselor. And, uh, the emphasis, uh, in particular on the local receipts, of course, we, we begin to look much hotter at them in the, in the second half of the year, in particular in this last quarter when we put the budget together. As is usually the case, there are some accounts that have shown growth and are more beneficial to the task of raising revenue to support city services. And some other accounts have either remained flat or in some cases have suffered declines. The handout that I, that I gave you highlights 15 accounts, uh, top 10 of which show a, a good increase in, in that, uh, positive sign for the city. The largest local receipt is excise tax. We had estimated excise taxes for this year of about nine and a half million. And as of today's report, we had 9,193,000. So we had already achieved 97% of the, the annual goal. And if the, uh, the string runs true and, and we still have commitments going out through the registry, uh, we, we project that number could be about 10.3 million. Could be a, uh, 850,000, $2 million increase for the city over last year's excise tax receipts. The second is a little unusual, and that's been flat for most of my six years here, as vessel taxes. Uh, we had, we had pegged that flat and tried to be conservative in the projections. 46,000 is the number. And as of today's report, we had already exceeded, uh, 130% of our goal at 59,855 in vessel taxes. So I guess it's not too surprising in the coastal community with 27 miles of coastline, but certainly people are buying more boats, and that'll result in probably about 20,000 more in revenue just on the vessel taxes. And another positive sign, uh, on social means is meal tax. We pegged that at 1,585,000. Year-to-date, it's 1.320. That's not money that we receive on a weekly or, or a daily basis. We receive that quarterly through the state. Uh, projection is for about 12.6% increase in. Projection is for about twelve point six percent increase in those taxes, and that would give us a two hundred thousand dollar increase over last year. Another positive sign. Grand Lakes Golf Course has made its first appearance on this list, I think also in the social category. We had already received a hundred and seven percent of projections. By the way, we're eighty-five percent of the way through the year, and that projects to an increase of between thirty and thirty-five thousand dollars. The next four items that I selected, just for display purposes, have to do with new construction and development. Plumbing inspections are up a hundred and twenty-six percent year-to-date over what the goal was, and could result in a sixty thousand dollar increase. Department fees, electrical, a hundred and thirty-two percent of year-to-date.
I just have a question, do you have more counsel for us?
No, I appreciate going through. I think that all of us have this, and I didn't know there's more time to go through for the annual viewer, just no idea yet, just tonight. I just want to hop on both these ones here. So one, I want to do a big shout out to the place we're in. The vessel collections are up because of their availability, it's a hundred and thirty percent. Both aren't even in the law, people aren't even thinking about paying their, you know, vessel tax bills, and they gotta put a stick around the ball, right? So that's terrific to see that that's out. Really jumped off the page today, talk about coastal community, FEMA reimbursement projection. So year-to-date FEMA reimbursement, eighteen thousand two forty-four. Projection, six hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and forty-four, and that is in FEMA, and they've paid out a loan mark, and we have a commitment from FEMA that that's coming, and what makes up that number?
So you're jumping to the bar?
Yeah, of this, no, right here, same page. I mean, we just go along, we lie, we lie, I'm just trying to...
Okay.
I think a little bit of...
That's fine.
Because you gave us a hint, though, right? I guess I'll jump into the numbers.
I can go faster.
Okay, well, I just, we just go along a jump, so I just...
No problem.
Let's jump into the numbers that the editor gave us, so...
I was on the phone with the two different FEMA representatives this week in regards to our upcoming second filing, which is progressive. And they assured me, actually, they assured me in the middle of February, we'd have that initial payment of six hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred in five to seven weeks.
And when was that?
That was in the middle of February, so it's already overdue.
Who at FEMA made that commitment? Because I talk to FEMA quite regularly, and I haven't heard that, so...
It was Andrew, Andrew Poliferno, Region One Disaster Coordinator of the meeting.
And this is relative to our MAP amendment, to our loan mark filing, letter of map provision filing?
This is our first filing for the first twenty-four to forty-eight hours, yes.
Okay, so twenty-four to forty-eight hours relative to storm, relative to snow?
From the 2015 winter storm, a hundred-year storm.
Twenty fifteen storms have not related to the MAP appeal process?
No.
I appreciate that information, that's very important. Secondly, on these numbers, this really jumped off the page today, is plumbing inspection collections are up, projected, you know, estimated one twenty-eight, minimum one ninety. Electrical fees estimates to be six, are gonna come in three ninety-five. Have you had a conversation with, I may need to save this for Director Duke when he comes for his budget, but then you come down to building inspections, fees, the seven hundred and fifty thousand in the negative. So what's going on that plumbing inspections are up, electrical inspections are up, people operating utilities and not the rest of the house, and why the seven hundred and fifty thousand differential in that account?
Well, I think it's important to point out, that's not in a negative, it's just that this year's collections would be two point five million versus the three point three last year, so comparatively, it's less.
We budget on estimates, we come in on our actuals, so I'm seeing as we budget the local receipt coming in at three point three five, and we're only gonna come in if the projection's true. We're at two point one point four seven now. If the projection trajectory continues as now projected, we're forecasting, we'll come in at two point five four four. That's a seven hundred and fifty thousand negative to what we budgeted for.
Correct.
Right, why the...
In my discussions with Inspecial Services, it's my understanding that last year's numbers popped a little bit because of some large projects. Fees were submitted and paid for the development plans, and perhaps some of the fallback. Be my guest and go through it with the Inspecial Services Director. Once the work is actually being done, the other fees are going up, but the introductory plans for the development, where some of the bigger fees are paid, jumped the last year's number to three point three five, whereas this year's number is a little more normalized, the two point five without big projects.
Okay, and you're saying building permit fees pulled upon construction, pulled upon...
In order to begin with construction.
Right, so I think we've got, we have some big projects that have taken on notice this year. You look at periphery of downtown, it wasn't just that. I just think that's a substantial delta to see how many large projects. I would figure the estimate to be larger than the actuals, and then higher. Board has the other fees within its department, so I will leave those questions for Inspector Duke. Thank you.
Continuing on, along the same lines of having an up and down from one year to the next, a normal year has been around a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred thousand. This year, the projection would be up to two hundred and ninety thousand, which stand alone would be a good year. Last year, through the program, through the Treasurer's Office of chasing recalcitrant holders and really going after people who hadn't paid up, one point three million came in. So same situation comparative purposes, it pales in comparison to last year, but it's still a good year. We just covered building inspection fees. Parking receipts really breaks down into two categories. The first one, and both of them combined are projected to be down fourteen percent. The first one, parking receipts are tickets paid at the collector's window, as well as tickets paid through the city's website. The second, parking lot parks line, also down fourteen percent, are tickets paid through the service provider conference, where you make your payment through the envelope provided when you get a ticket. These are not to be confused with parking lot revenue. Parking lot revenue goes into a separate fund, it's a special revenue fund, four five oh one. That has a balance of just under nine hundred thousand dollars, and that is where the parking offset money comes from. So there's more than enough money to pay the six hundred thousand dollar parking offset, as well as carryover amount for next year, and we'll certainly have three hundred thousand to pay that offset again next year. So overall, just looking at the largest items in local receipts, where we are, we thought we'd be, it's healthy, some are up, some are down, but this portion of our funding sources will be north of twenty-seven million, and it's holding us up.
Counselor Finn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, I feel like every year, and I don't have the data in front of me to throw numbers at you, but I feel like every year, the parking receipts are unexpectedly down by double digits. I feel like that's been a trend over the last number of years, is that...
You're correct.
What's going on with that?
There's less revenue being generated through the writing of parking tickets. A lot of it has been attributed to downtown construction, removal of meters in some places. One year, I know that there was a personnel shakeup, where we had an individual who was military service, I recall. But as I report the numbers to you, you're not incorrect. We're down fourteen percent this year in those accounts, that's been a trend. In earlier years, we've had parking offset payments in excess of a million. It dropped to eight hundred thousand, parking offset, to help pay for traffic costs related personnel, and now we're at six hundred thousand. So...
And I believe during this period of time, we even added a one or a one point five position in the marketing, I feel like parking enforcement officers, I think we added some money, and they're still going down.
Well, the trend is, the trend has definitely been going down, it's been for a number of years, and I know that there have been discussions, because I'm in on them from the revenue end, on how to improve those revenues. Ideas that I think will improve those revenues, but they're outside of my realm. But there is a focus on it, you're right.
Right, it's concerning to me, because part of, again, part of the presentation for downtown, so much comes back to downtown, part of the presentation that we got in March of 2018, that is, parking revenues are gonna offset some of the monies that we're borrowing to build the parking garages, that these parking garages are gonna be self-sustaining in the future. And we're not even meeting projections on a year-to-year basis. We're missing revenue projections every year. Again, I ran the numbers in front of me, just going off of my, the best of my recollection, but they were off every year. They were off ten, eight, you know, fourteen percent this year. And I just don't know how that jives with the logic of parking garages are gonna pay for themselves in the future. So that's why I ask you about what's going on now. So I didn't get, I got an answer, but I don't know that I got an explanation as to why the numbers are off. So the downtown, the downtown can't make up fourteen percent of all?
I think there'll be new parking structures and plans and rules in place to enhance the current revenue stream, improve upon what's there, maybe add additional sources, but I've been only in on some of those meetings from a finance perspective, not from the tactical planning that I know is being talked about.
Sure, and I suppose that's a question, does Frank come up here? He comes up here? No, he doesn't cover for the budget, right?
I think perhaps in the discussion on the proposed new park, there'll be some parking things.
Okay, all right, and I guess I'll leave it to that, but I just throw it out there as an ongoing concern that we're just not meeting the revenue projections. And so, what, so you've lowered your projection for next year, right, for next fiscal year, right?
Yes, we will.
And is that, so the projection for next fiscal year is one eighty-four, right, a hundred and eighty-four thousand? Projection for next year is a hundred and eighty-four thousand for parking receipts?
That's for receipts this year. It actually went up a little bit today, I recalculated the numbers, I didn't fully update this sheet, but we're looking at a hundred and eighty-six thousand to complete this year.
Okay, so what's our projection for next year?
I don't have a projection done for next year. I think that that will involve some of the plans. What we would learn from this is not to exceed that at this moment, not to go above the one eighty-six in that line item and expect more until other plans are revealed.
Right, because that's what we've done eight years past, we keep estimating amount and then missing the amount.
Correct, for parking.
Okay, is that something that you could get for us, like offline, just send it to the council?
Historical?
Yeah, just like five years, five years, what the estimated was.
I can show you the line items for the last five years, as well as the transfers to fund parking offset.
All right, but can you give us the, what the estimates were heading into the fiscal year?
That'll be a little more difficult, but I may have worksheets on it.
Yeah, I mean, you've been here how many years now?
This is my sixth.
Right, so, and I think you've given us something similar to this for the past six years, so if you could pull something together, it isn't, you know, it's nothing that's urgent, but just kind of for future reference. Appreciate it, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Bonner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, thank you for the plus five. Excise tax, I know this is a little up right now, what is, where is that coming from? How is that number getting higher?
That's from residents buying new cars, better cars, everybody but me, I think. That's based on the value of the automobiles that are driven and registered.
Okay, on top of that, maybe I got that, just the mass and potential of revenue coming to the city. How do you oversight, I know a lot of homeowners are gonna register their vehicles, and then they're gonna start paying excise tax every year, is that correct?
That's correct. If one vehicle's registered here in the city, that's who they owe their excise tax to. If they're doing something and registering elsewhere, that's law enforcement.
Sure, so that's how you're gonna get enforcement on that, is the law side? And what I'm getting to is the renter side, or getting new renters coming in, these multi-dwarves and there's plenty of places. How do we get that revenue from some of the people that might be just moving here from where the ranch is, and now they're living here? How do we get that revenue?
Well, through their insurance policies, all the cars have to be insured, so they have to register their place of residence, that's where the bills go. There might be some timeline if someone moves, but the excise bills are sent out based on according to the personal legal address.
That's why I'm asking, when, that overlapping time is, we're losing revenue coming through our city, and they're using our services, they're living in the city. How do we, how can I say we can do a better job at that? Does enforcement, law enforcement have to get involved, or how do we do that?
That's a little outside of my realm. I can tell you what the numbers add up to, but I know how to chase people who are not playing by the rules.
Okay, I see the numbers going up, I think that looks really good, I just, to be very honest, so you have money to go up and higher?
It's, I think it could actually go higher than whatever it may, I had some conversations with the Treasurer, she's a little more conservative. I think it would be ten great, but out of respect to the Treasurer, I'm keeping there.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other?
Counselor Finn? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you, Mark. I just wanted to go back to your five of the meals tax, is there another quarter left?
Yes, there's another quarter left. And, you know, we're doing better right now with the money that we have in three, three, fours, it shows twelve point six. I haven't made any additional assumptions for better weather in the fourth quarter, what history tells us, with real better weather, if it got better today, you will venture up more.
So you're really untargetful to me, that's something. Please, Mr. Chairman, to the auditor, Madam Auditor, we had, you've had a chance to review these revenue projections.
Yes, I am, Counselor.
And you think it's a pretty good representation?
Yes, I do, I do think it's a good representation of what is being projected for fiscal 2017 projections, based on our projections of the year.
I'd be happy to make a motion if you accept the revenue projections.
Here's a motion on the floor to accept the revenue. Yes?
Counselor Bonner.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Leeang.
Yes.
Counselor Posy.
Yes.
Ms. Cavanaugh? The floor is still yours.
The floor is still mine.
That was an easy part, was it?
I think so, especially with the accounts that went up. The budget for municipal finance, it's page four of the budget book. We have a net decrease of one point seven percent last year, we were at one point four three zero million. The amount requested in this year's budget is one million four hundred and six thousand. The notable changes are a personnel change. John Rowland, who had been hired as a statistician analyst, business analyst, came in to salary of fifty-four thousand dollars, he had a mathematics degree. John did a great job for us, position opened up in the Assessors' Office, and John moved on. We filled his position with Eric Mason. Eric Mason is an economist, published economist. Any of you who've had a chance to work with Eric or meet with Eric, I think it'd be hard not to come away impressed. He's been a tremendous asset to the department. Mayor asked me to research where an economist's salary should be, I did so, consulted with the mayor, and we had a meeting of minds, and we saw Eric's salary at the seventy thousand two sixty-nine. You can see there's a difference from the previous analyst, also changing the title to economic analyst. We increased the city leave buyback amount to five hundred thousand. You can see a natural progression, I believe it was two hundred and fifty thousand when we first put this account under finance, the fund when someone leaves. Previously, it was paid for out of the, it became to burdensome. So that's up to five hundred thousand dollars. And the last noticeable change, the equipment line, which we would use to buy police cars and various vehicles for different departments, has been reduced from three hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand, the reason being the anticipated introduction of the CIB plant, which would take a burden of vehicle purchases, so we took the opportunity to reduce that line.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's kind of, I guess I'd put this in the House of Commerce Department first, over the category. Here's what I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about generally three percent increase. I don't want to sit here tonight and go through every particular position and talk about how we cut that specifically, but it's a rule here usually, we pass on each budget individually. One of the things that I would really feel would be useful is that the auditor... One of the things that I would really feel would be useful is that the auditor is going to us at a later date in relation to the budgets, is the total impact of the 3% costs related to management positions. There's a philosophical issue that I'm having with this, to do it at this point, and it's around the administration's characterization of this as keeping up with the union salaries. That they feel that this is an issue of parity and that as unions negotiate with their particular, whatever they're getting, and they want to deal with it, they need to bring that up to the union. The reason I find that, because it is generally comparing out this orange is, the union salaries that are achieved are achieved, again, through collective bargaining process. And oftentimes, what that means is that they are giving up certain things in order to get what might be that same, that particular pay increase. This is no question about what people deserve or whether we think what's right or wrong, but in terms of what people should be receiving in those management positions. But it's about what I thought would improve, unless it was simply a doggone phony show last year, is in relation to trying to come up with certain standards and policies around comparability studies, market types of things, that these various positions, who they attract, et cetera, was going to be the basis which we make such decisions and not just simply on a blanket, what the unions get, that's the increase that we need. And so what I'd really like to be able to see, and from through you, Mr. Chairman, to the auditor, if we could have just the total picture, and also what some of those discrepancies are and why, because I think everybody's looked at it, knows now there are some discrepancies. So if you could put some of that together, what I would like to do is go through this, and I would like to approve the budgets, but perhaps conditionally on later receiving some of this so that we, if we want to make decisions, adjusting that in some way, which we might get in a position to do so. If that's acceptable to you, Mr. Chairman, I just think that would be the thing.
Mr. Mason?
Yeah, Mr. Cattell?
Do you technically have the budget conditionally included?
No, I'm saying, what we traditionally have done, we passed on a specific program.
Yes.
We can go through it for tonight, put every one of them on hold if we so wish to do so. What I'm saying is to kind of take this larger management issue and just basically generally, if we move forward, because we always have a motion to approve a budget as amended or whatever, but that we could then conditionally come back and if we decide that we have some issues that we can be addressed if we can, rather than doing that department by department and calculating this a lot, we can make our own decision as to the merit of the raises that are being presented.
So essentially, you want to hold the departmental raises as they are right now, at the all-time reporting, approve the budget, provided you're prepared with all the contacts?
Again, we have to approve this funding and then pay, so obviously, we're not going to approve it unless we've actually approved those particular management raises. I think the real issue is, is that, you know, we could go through this night, tonight, and start cutting and cutting and cutting, but I would rather get a bigger picture at another meeting from the auditor related to the actual impact of these raises across the budget, that's all I'm saying.
Sequentially, I mean, I could be invited, that's something that we're going to do.
Well, then through you, perhaps the auditor wants that complicated and produced just in terms of generally what the new management rates are adding in total to the budget?
I can produce what the current salaries are of the departments, and then what I can do is I can compare that to what is the, what's reflected in the FY17 budget. The question that I do have is, these are departments and they're also administrative that are running employees.
You can, you can count that.
Do you, would you like those?
I think that's important, that should be counted, those suffer from collective bargaining.
So essentially, we're going to table the raises from the departments, handling them forward done by the auditor and then move sequentially through each department.
If the bottom is middle, so, or the chairs. I think that what we run into is contrast managerial raises, and I want to know what the full impact of that is on the budget, as, in terms of that 3%. And also, I want to have some picture of those anomalies that we know is dispressing within the budget. And I don't think that's surprise, I don't think that's too arbitrary to get a number.
No, I can have a report to everyone this week, you can discuss it at the next meeting.
I appreciate it, please.
Better entertain that, all those in favor? Close? Hey?
Leave that then.
Any other questions for Mr. Cattell pertaining to his budget ex the department? As your Councilor?
Mark?
I have not.
Oh, sorry, I do have one, I have something.
No, I have this one out, Finn, you don't.
No, no, never yield.
I'll yield back.
I'm losing my hearing. Mark, I think we want to talk specifically about the one, which again is the most dramatic component of your budget, and that's the specific position on the economic analyst. And I, and again, I'm open to anybody making certain specific cuts related to these positions as we go through this. I just don't want to go through every position, particularly in terms of the management department positions. But with this particular position, when did this position start?
I began working with Eric.
No, no, excuse me, no, we did a position itself.
The position has been open for a number of years. When John Rowland came in, I believe it was at the beginning of '15, as a business analyst statistician. He filled, he filled an open position.
And so is this ever, is this position at any point, is that two lead man in an older line that existed?
No.
Do you, did anything related to an order or anything that, again, how fine, you know, the analyst ever come before, back before this, Councilor?
Excuse me, Councilor?
Well, usually, most of our positions in the city are usually accompanied by an order that describes that specific position. One which, in many clients' earlier sessions I've been in, you've actually struggled and cut or taking those specific orders with that authority, basically, for those positions out. I just don't ever recall receiving anything related to the economic analyst position. And I only see a record here going back to about FY14, expenditures under that specific line.
No, I'm not aware of an order previously being discussed.
From my perspective, and others, I'm happy to get the ball rolling, and I understand, obviously, my colleagues, they had different opinions, but the jump from forty-five, forty-four, fifty-four, four fifteen, to the seventies, rather seemingly the jump.
Different positions, different skill level, Councilor. We researched the economist position, which Mr. Mason has to be read for. I think I mentioned that he's been published.
Hey, I, just, first off, I appreciate all of that, I'm not saying that, but what we're hearing here tonight, this is the difficulty that I've had to the two administrations, which is in terms of coming up with these categories, these specific line items. What it sounds like, it's not just a new person with different skill sets, it sounds like it's entirely an imposition. And so now, what we've done, basically, is have about twenty, what is that, twenty sixteen thousand dollar increase in that specific line, that, you know, I, again, how do you make such a jump?
I believe I answered it by saying he had a higher skill set. We've spoken with other communities, the city of Summerville, has two economists on staff, both are at salaries in excess of 120,000.
Okay, and again, there's an issue here, that I'm expressing my concern about. Again, this has gone apparently from a statistician position to an economist position. I don't recall anyone ever coming back before this body with a new job order, basically, or definitely finding these things out, if you've done in the past with the city. And again, I get a little uneasy, again, I think Councilor Paul G said, but setting certain policy solely within the context of this budget, by approving this, virtually, you know, carving this in granite in this time forward. You know, I'll get things started here, but I'm going to propose, which I think is reasonable under the circumstances, I'm just going to propose cutting it by 5,000, cutting that position by 5,000 dollars. If the mayor at some point again wants to come back, or the department wants to come back, and lay out for us what this position is, happy, you know, to reconsider that, I'd motion 5,000 dollars back.
Doesn't need a second, but I'll second.
Doesn't. Will you on the motion, Brian?
No, I'll second.
Motion on the floor to cut the economic analyst position by 5,000 dollars. Councilor Forrest, motion?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman, Mark, the economic analyst, direct reports to you?
Yes.
He's the direct report.
Correct.
Why the decision, to Councilor Finn, I think it's a little misleading, I understand what you did, why? I just want clarification, so it was a financial analyst position, had a salary of 54,000. Why not zero that line out and then bring in a new position, an economic analyst, because I just think that brings better clarity to what you've done. I understand, but when you're looking at the numbers, right, you're seeing a 30% salary increase, versus this is a completely different position, a completely different skill set, you've upgraded the personnel by leaning one position, finding a position. So I guess I'd want to hear more too, because I've seen the benefit of Mr. Mason's work and some of the work he's done, just alone, the Port Vale Housing Trust one has been invaluable to us as far as, you know, the economics of what we're bringing in, when we talk to him and look. So I've been seeing the value of his performance, but I guess I just want an understanding, for clarity, as to why listed this way, because I feel it's just as misleading to get to this discussion.
In about the first two, maybe three drafts, there were two separate line items. The economic analyst was a new line item. The statistician analyst was its own line item, which ended. As we consolidate, as we redraft, as we put together a new budget, it became one. It was just suggested as neater to make it an upgrade of the existing line, rather than do exactly what you say, end one, begin a new one. So it was, at one point in one of the drafts.
So something on the workload, of why the city has value, so I've seen it myself with the Port Vale Housing Trust, but not yet on public, but not the rest of this body. So tell me, from your possession, from your position, if someone who has a direct report to you, why the value of the economic analyst?
Some of what you heard Sender talk about, about what we need as far as financial forecasting is right in his strong suit. Not only, we had begun financial forecasting models, we've gone out five years. They weren't ready for public display or submission in front of the council, they needed work. We were working with our bankers, we were working with our independent accountants, we were looking at other communities that do a really good job, Summerville, for instance. Eric fits beautifully into that, he digests and puts the information back in a capacity that is very understandable and needed by us. In addition to that function, he jumped right in, he was tremendous as far as the preparation of the budget. He was, he's also participating with the Mass Area Planning Council on some of the incentives that they have for Quincy. He's also our representative from finance, but with the Lieutenant Governor's Program on the city compacts, making sure that Quincy meets the goals it's set out to as far as employment increases in the city. So he's wearing multiple hats, he's serving in a number of different capacities. He's shown tremendous ability in everything that would give him, and he's been fantastic.
And you talked about salary costs, and you particularly referenced Summerville, what were the numbers?
We actually, we actually had quite a few of them. The people in Summerville had a lot more experience, and they were both over 120,000. When we went to the Bureau of Economic Analyst salaries, we had a range of 71,000 to 149,000 based on 16 jobs they had listed. When we went to the publication of the Economist, the average salary was 103,000. When we went to the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis of salaries, the average salary was 85,000. When we went to the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis, it was 79,125. We combined this information with the financial management position that's being created in the fire department, and we put them at the same, 70,000 to 295, which is also the salary of the financial manager of the police department.
When you're referencing, I just wanted to go back, the city compact relative to employment goals, that's not our municipal employment goals, that's employment goals for economic development within the community, a private employer you're referencing.
Correct.
And is his work outside the municipal realm, in working on them towards those goals? I guess of...
Well, it's him wearing another hat, as a part of the finance office, I think it's invaluable.
And I think the need, what would determine the need for the position change? Why not, why was statistician analyst insufficient, that we needed the skills of the economic analyst? What's the differential?
As Sender pointed out, as others have spoken to, one of the main concerns we have as we look forward is OPED. I've been working with Eric, who's probably putting close to 40 hours on what our OPED liability is, and what some models are on what we could and should be doing. Then there's the models on what we can afford to do. And Eric fills all of those with a great amount of enthusiasm. Along the same lines, he hasn't yet focused, but we will have him focusing on the pension obligation, the unfunded pension obligation. We're also tracking healthcare costs, so those types of things, looking forward. He's modeled the debt exercises for Sender, on what different modeling, although no decisions have been made on capital improvement, what different models might look like. If we fund, you know, so much in year one versus year two, enroll it forward on a five-year basis. So he's great for the modeling of that, as well as the building of the asset base on what vehicles actually cost. Eric is a great research economist and finds different prices around the country that we can take advantage of that we haven't reached.
What was his published, published provincial figure?
I can tell you I read one of the articles, I tried to. And I can't name them, but we can supply those.
That'd be interesting, thank you.
That's actually more personal privilege, I just really want to meet some. His talents or skill abilities or any of those things, or perhaps even our city's need for those things, is not fun taking issue with. What I'm taking issue with is the ability to have some predictability around this budget process. And I'm trying to retain what it's, when I first started here, was that whenever these positions would be proposed, we would have orders describing those positions, particularly one that sounds to me, the scope of his employment is absolutely amazing. But we can't make budget decisions based solely on the skill sets of personal individuals or whatever, we can do it based on some kind of rationale, some level of capability and consistency. And that, I think, is the only thing for me that is plus, that's a significant jump from all this previous salary under that position. And that's the basis of, I guess, nothing to do with his skills, his talents, his abilities. And again, given the scenario where we're about 3% across different areas, and again, we have this one particular anomaly that we've raised. So, yeah, I want to be clear, it's not reference to him. We have to do that for every one of these job positions we have, that we obviously get on us. on those.
Thank you, Counsel. The mayor's representative, Mr. Walker.
For you, Mr. Chairman, to Counsel Fenn, I think you raised a valid point there, and I think the administration, if it was the will of the council to hold off on this, we would be willing to go back and create more, with some more detail on the position, and perhaps we could retake this up at the next meeting on a subject we're having going forward, as the will of the council. We're happy to do that, I know we have done that in the past. In this particular case, I think it was more so an upgrade rather than a totally new job, and perhaps that was the rationale, but if it works for the council and committee, we'd be happy to go back and create more and readdress this at future times.
Counsel, you on board with that?
Chair, again, I'm applying to, to move forward with my thought, but certainly entertaining the mayor's office, but I expect.
Do you basically want to provide the value of the job description to the draft?
I think that that's usually the way this work.
Or an actual one.
It was, and it worked, and it's, again. We don't get much emails once, and I stand this discussion.
Counsel Calhoun.
Yes, I, I second the motion, I support the motion based on the principle, I'm trying to talk fast here, because it's been a long night, but the individual does his job, does a fantastic job, certainly don't want anything that just speaks in any way to the value that we place on him, it's a policy issue. When we add new positions, it's, it's like we're slipping them in under the radar, we can just do it with the budget without any order. Is there a job description for this? You know, clearly there was some thought that was put into this, there was some background, that's the kind of thing that should have been provided to the council. I'm going to vote in favor of cutting the budget by this amount, we can always add it back in later on, when it comes time to pass the overall budget by the council, we can vote on the full amount. So I'm going to support it at this time, because currently before us, as we're voting on this particular budget tonight, this particular item, there's not enough information for me to support, you know, a 30% increase in a job description change or a job title change. Although, in favor of Counsel Fenn's motion, and I hope the administration does provide a job description, some initial information, I'd be happy to support the amount requested at that time if it's justified. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So is it the will of this motion on the floor to make the cut? Essentially, Counsel Fenn, you withdraw that motion?
No, no, we can move the question, because again, I think Counsel Calhoun, which is a description of its act, we could even deal with this quite honestly, with an appropriation in the half of the budget passes, but, so I think I'll agree to move the question.
The question, the moves, Clark, if you call the roll?
Counsel King.
No.
Counsel DeWanna.
Yes.
Counsel Hens.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
No.
Counsel Hughes.
No.
Counsel Fars.
No.
Counsel Weyen.
Yes.
Counsel Paluji.
Yes.
General Cole.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, five to four, and again, you know, to act like this, I think we're a little amiable to having an order to, you know, replace a compensation, it's just more defensive, I think, is what we're, what we're seeking towards. Next, I'm on the, Mr. Chairman.
Could I owe the overall budget, and I'll make a motion to pass the overall budget?
Can I, Counsel Paluji?
No, I'm sorry, I asked a question, but I'll make it for the purposes of such, I'll make a motion to pass the overall budget as a matter of fact. Mark?
Yes.
Couple quick things. OPED is like the boogeyman of municipal finance, the only difference is it's real, it's really under the bad weight force. So it's good to know that we're focused on some, some different strategies on how to pay that down. But overall, your budget is a 75%, $75,000 net increase from last year's budget, right?
You're talking about the finance budget?
Yeah, is that overall?
It's a decrease of 1.7%.
Yeah, but, but you're taking out a, and I can't find it in your last year's budget, but you're taking out $100,000. I can't follow this, but, 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 what's your other page? Your description page?
62.
So on page 62, it says the budget decreased by $24,000 because the previous line for capital equipment purchases included in this budget decreased by $100,000. So you take out that $100,000, you actually have a $75,000 increase, right?
Correct.
So it looks to me that about 25, 30,000.
$75,000, but the difference in the salary is sure.
Right.
$50,000 for the.
For the buyback. What's the deal with the buyback? And I raised this issue the other, a couple of council meetings ago, when we spent free cash to cover some unanticipated buybacks. I thought we capped this. I thought we capped these numbers because the people who are currently in the system have to abide by the new rules.
They do, but we have no control over how many people retire. The only actual identifier is for public safety officials who must retire at 65. We don't know other, other employees are retiring until they fill out their paperwork and submit it. We hear rumors, but it doesn't really mean anything. Based on the amount of time, there are caps in place for vacation and sick time, there can only be so much.
Sure, but so somebody who's under the old system, are they still under the old system, or is everybody on the new system where there's caps?
I can't answer that one, that's, it's a combination of what's in place as far as human resources, what they use for some of their numbers. We get calculations based on time on the books for both sick and vacation, and then the calculation is made, and we're given the amount that we're funding.
But it's a, but it's a hard cap, right? I mean, people can really roll over.
It's a hard cap based on, on the positions that they're in for vacation and sick time, correct. I'm not sure all employees are covered by that, if they were longtime employees and didn't have that at the time they were hired.
I would ask Mr. Walker, he seems to have set that out, and perhaps through, through you, Mr. Chairman, if you'll audit it. Do you know if he answered that question?
Yes, I do, Counsel. Basically, if someone was to retire, who would pay for that for their vacation, they would get two years plus the current year, so if someone gets four weeks vacation, then they would, they would get 12 weeks. And on sick time, it's $50 per day.
Sure, but that's.
But there's no cap on what you can carry over year after year on sick time. So by now, if I had 300 sick days and I left, then I would get $50 a day for the doorless.
Even now, there's no cap? Or is that?
I don't believe, I don't believe there's a cap on sick time.
You know, say I'm John Smith, I get hired tomorrow, has, I don't know, anything in city hall on the security guard?
I don't believe there's a cap on sick time. I believe there's a cap on the dollar a month, they would pay as high as $50 per day, and it's $50 per day.
Through you to, to the mayor's representative, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Walker. Is there a cap on sick time, sick time that employees can carry over to be bought back when they retire?
There's none.
Is that a, is that a, is that a?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Okay, all right, that answers my question. So it's not, so there's not a finite number because?
No.
Because people can keep rolling up that, something perhaps we should look at in the future, but I understand your budget now, so thank you.
The changes year to year, we have a lot of longtime employees, and especially public safety officials that retire, the numbers can be very high.
Got it, okay. There's a motion on the floor?
There is, there's a motion on the floor, so no further discussions, Clark, would follow the roll, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could, could I, could I? Point of order, do we have to take a roll call vote? Do we all take a roll call vote in the committee process? I don't think we necessarily need to do it in terms of, obviously the chair's choice, but I just, I don't think we, we have to roll a call vote each time. I'm just throwing it out there, whatever you want to do.
Well, any experience from you as well?
Yes.
Move passes on the budget, there's no further discussions. Motion on the floor, passes.
All those in favor?
All those in favor.
Aye.
All those. One, two, three.
Just Gavin O'Neil, the second part of the document is the reserve fund, that can be found on page five of the budget detail section.
Counsel Fenn?
No, I think, can I support the president, I think this is a great policy to promote, and it's something that I hope, over time, we can commit more to, so.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Call of favor?
Aye.
I have it. Okay, Ms. Gavin O'Neil, next is the pensions, which can be found on page six, the budget detail.
Retirement pension contribution for the fiscal budget for 2017 is an increase of 5.08% to $25,000,050,196.
Motion on the floor to move approval, the discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
I have it. The next section, Ms. Gavin O'Neil, is unemployment, which can be found on section two, page seven, section three, page 64. Motion, Counsel Fenn?
Again, by way of introduction, those of us who've experienced this in short this November, why this exercise for aging is kind of important, is that when we sit, when the tax rate was set, we voted on that, we received numerous, numerous calls of people upset. And I think Counsel Calhoun should allude to the discussion with our bond consultant this evening as well, in terms of people's perceptions we're experiencing. One key thing that I'm stressing here this evening is that the only control we have over that tax rate, what happens, is what's happening here as a part of this specific process. That's the bottom line. So if we're out there and we're telling people or listening to those who have concerns about their tax bills or whatever, the only place we can make a difference is here. I want to say that that's why, looking at some of these, these issues, we need to take close look. This is one of those items, I think, that, again, I tend to try to rely on actuals to look at the projections being made within the context of this budget. If we look at this historically, we go back to FY14, there was an expenditure there of $145,000, over $145,000. Last year, in FY15, the, there was actual spending of $107,000. To date, under the actuals, in FY16, we're currently at $58,000. My feeling in relation to this is that these cuts throughout are critical cuts. In the past, some of my colleagues argued in defending a budget, they say, oh, it's only $5,000, it's only $10,000, it's only $30,000, whatever. The bottom line is, it's all of those together that allow us in some sense to control that budget. I don't know, not a monitor through you, I don't wish to misquote you, but I think they said something like about $1 million in cuts, the rule, $1 million cuts, it was about $25,000 on the average tax bill. And that's what we're hearing a lot from our constituents, is concern in terms of that. I'm saying all of that, but in the spirit of this, and how this budget works, and municipal finance, I think, would work, is that what I'm proposing is that we cut this specific line item by $30,000, bringing that down to $120,000. I think that that falls pretty well within the trend that we've had here over the last couple of years. And I think the thing to remember is that that cut's not so, not so large or difficult that if these projections are off, which again, in 30 years, it hasn't exceeded that 150 mark, they can, people can always come back, it works, and at that point in time, there's an improved additional obligation to meet whatever the need that arises. So in that spirit, I am going to move that we cut this by $30,000.
For the purpose of all major procedure, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment to my motion to approve.
Okay, so the motion on the floor, the bias motion on the floor, is to cut the unemployment budget by $30,000 and we have to do a $120 net. Correct. Right? Correct. On the, and on the motion, if you don't want that, or anything, we're, we're in a pretty good position with that.
Basically, on this particular year, there's only three more months left in the fiscal year, and the, for this particular year, the average unemployment bill ranges between $14,000 and $18,000 a month. So there will be substantial amount of money like this to go in front of the relationship.
And the bill budget, as of the actual, did you run and grasp, was about what?
Yes, it was $180,000 available, so there's three more months left for unemployment bills to get posted to this account.
And now, on 65% of the overall budget allocated last year, to fulfill that obligation, correct?
Correct, last year, it was $17,000.
Okay, so the motion on the floor, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Actually, you can call the roll, my call basically.
On this amendment, right?
On this amendment, so there's a amendment on the floor to cut the unemployment budget by $30,000.
Point of order, if I could, sorry, I was the original maker of the motion to pass the budget, I accepted Counsel Fenn's, the motion as a friendly amended, therefore you only have to vote on one thing, which is to pass the budget at $112,000.
Can you become the parliamentarian?
I'm trying. Thank you.
Okay.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel DeWanna.
Yes.
Counsel Fenn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Fars.
Yes.
Counsel Weyen.
Yes.
Counsel Paluji.
Yes.
General Cole.
Yes.
Okay, the next one on the docket, Ms. Gavin O'Neil, is Medei, that can be found on page eight of section two and page 65 of section three. Motion on the floor to move approval, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those, the house have it. Next one on the agenda is the Brentford Golf Course, which can be found on page nine of section two, page 66 of section three.
Can we move through? Clark, you come in?
Yes, on the motion, I think it was motionable.
Yep.
But just on the motion, quickly, I could, just, Mr. Gavin O'Neil, just a question, I know the lease is coming up.
That, for Miss Rock. Could you just explain, only because I live there, so I talked to you, um, what is the status of the golf course in terms of our lease and all of that stuff, just quickly, if you could explain?
It's been two years since I, since I read the lease, Counsel. I believe it was a 50-year lease, and I believe it is up relatively soon, perhaps 2020? I may have to double check that.
About 2021.
2021?
2021.
And so, just, are there, have there been discussions regarding what we will be doing at a lease?
Not defining us.
Not defining us. All right, through you, Chairman Cole, to the mayor's representative, if, if I could ask, Mr. Walker, any conversations regarding the premise of this?
Not that I'm aware of, Counsel.
Okay, all right, thank you. No, thanks to constituents on the street asking, so, all right, something to even admire, all right. Thank you, that's all, any questions?
There is a motion on the floor to move passage, any further discussion? All of them in favor?
Aye.
All those, I have it. Next, next page on the agenda is Gavin O'Neil, home contributory.
Move passage.
Move passage, motion on the floor, any discussion? All of them in favor?
Aye.
All those, I have it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Counsel.
Okay, next on the agenda is Ms. Deb Coughlin, treasurer collector. Good evening, Deb.
Good evening.
For joining us. First part of Deb's visitation this evening can be found on page 13, section two, page 69 of section three, this document, all of yours.
Good evening. Very slight increases in.
Good evening. Very slight increases in the budget overall, I believe it's about 135%, that's primarily due to the salary increases in personal service section. We had a couple of reclasses of physicians, and I think there were two principal clerk twos, previously a senior clerk type, is to a contemporary area. And also the physician has the Florida City Hall, the Epping Florida, that was also in the, that was incorrectly categorized as senior clerk type is blind, and that shows separately as a clerk type. You have that all, Deb, it's $112,000.
Yeah.
The only other, and does change of significance, could be an office applies an additional $15,000, we need some new chairs in the office.
Move approval, motion on the floor, move approval?
Please, Counsel. I don't want to have to have more friendly amendments.
Counsel Ben.
No, I just sort of wanted to point something out, again, this may seem like a small amount, but again, the professional tech lines, and I know it's only $200,000, but in three years, no one's ever spent that $200,000.
Well, the training was, was cut several years ago, really not much, it's been a train, so perhaps it did nothing.
So that being said, I would just simply cut that, but I would strongly encourage the mayor to come back with what would be an appropriate, I think, to cover that training specifically, if it's a need. Is that, things like U N S, things like other?
We have this training, like, it's an old four years long, to some of the, these state-sponsored classes.
So I, I'd take a motion to add $200,000.
Okay, motion on the floor to cut to $100,000 on a professional tech. Counsel Man.
I just had a good question as I was answering to this. For you, Mr. Chair, I just had a question on the line I'm on for clerk type is. It says in 2015 budget, 2016, there was both zero, and then in 2017, the request was $37,474. And when we look at the report that was sent, the auditor corrected to us, it says that only 53% of the budget was used to date. Can you just confirm why that is? Is it because it was?
The position was created later.
Yeah, the agency, I'm sorry, we had a vacancy in that position. Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Yes, did you put the motion on? I imagine that the motion is about $200,000 of professional tech, so it's on the floor.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel DeWanna.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Now.
Counsel Fars.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Kamuchi.
Present.
Chairman Paul.
No. Okay, the motion passes six, six to one. All right, next, next item, Ms. Coughlin, is tax title, can be found on section two, page fourteen, section three, page seven.
This particular expenditure seems related to the cost to, to deal with various situations having to do with tax title, the advertising and the reporting, when we take new, we take new tax leads and inform them, and also the use to do the pass to, with assign the tax leads to third party collection.
With approval on the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel. Got the big counsel, of course.
Okay, you're free, Mr. Chairman. On the tax title, the management of the property, so a couple of different things that are handled. Some of that, we sell the tax leads.
Yes.
Right, then there's properties we take in tax title.
Well, you have to take them into the tax title, of course, and then you can.
Then, then, yeah, right, but some properties we actually acquire, so we too have learned to ban a property, you know, and my frustration is always, now that we have them, balls in whose court?
So you're saying we have a new tax title?
So we've taken possession of the properties.
Oh, just possession.
Yeah, 20 years ago, they're banned, right, because we've gone through this.
I'm sorry, I don't know which ones those are. You're saying the city owns them now?
So the city took them years and years and years ago, they kind of ignored. So I look at it as, what's the procedure, follow whose court, and is their position responsible for that through this department? How does, how do those properties then get managed?
Well, I think we'd have to talk to one of the special services on that. We'd have to talk to.
I'm talking about once they're in the ownership of the public. So, right, we violate some of our worst light ordinances.
I mean, it would depend. I know, I know in the past, I talked to Mr. Duper regarding some properties, so yeah, whether they were unsafe.
Right, so there was quite a part of them unsafe, was, for example, Freckle Rose, one of the ones that's been frustration, got by a day and a day in my life, for 20 years, and this thing's been abandoned, and we're getting it, there are, we're trying to look at this budget, this is one of these things that stays on the carousel, it doesn't seem like there's anyone who's accountable for it procedurally, so I'm just trying to kind of get that understanding.
Let me, let me check, let me check with the inspection service. I, we owned it, you know, it was a building.
Right, so what do we sell this building, what do we demolish this building, who funds for that? Because I look for that as, you have to know money to demolish. But I should be looking at someone to manage that process. Here's the situation, here's the unsafe structure, with the demolition, it's a model of space. Some of these, there's a lot of gray hill, years and years and years, and you look at some of the property values, and how it pulls some of the, like, property, you know, is detrimental to the others. So those are some things, we're just following the carousel, so. As.
Those have, you know, some conversations in the years, I'll get back to you more. Appreciate that, thank you.
All right, it's Counsel Calhoun, would you put the motion on the floor?
No, I'd have to withdraw, with the other side of the world.
Yeah, again, and I appreciate that, but I just don't want to keep making cuts or friendly amendments. I would like to, to, you know, take a few moments of reflection and calm, and see if there's somebody that actually has something that they want to cut, or whatever. And again, this is one of those areas that I'm, you know, looking very seriously at the actuals, and we go back, we can go back as far as fiscal year ten, in fact, in the last seven, including this year, seven fiscal years, we never approached that $50,000 mark. FY14 was around $6,000. FY15 was around $14,000, and FY16 was, is right now on $7,000. And so, again, given the fact that every, every extra dollar is built on the fact that the taxpayer, Quincy, I think it's important that, again, recognize, I know one year I came close to approaching, and I can't remember what the circumstances, was FY12, around forty, over $49,000. So with that in mind, I'm going to propose that we cut that by $20,000, lowering the appropriation to $30,000.
Motion, Counsel O'Callaghan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, Deb. Deb, something like demolition of this unsafe structure that was a tax title property, is that an eligible expense?
I don't believe so, but.
Yeah, that wouldn't be under tax title expenditure, so if the property assumed under tax title, it's now in the ownership of the city, I'm looking for funds to demolish these unsafe structures, to bring, improves public safety to a neighborhood, is tax title expenditure a line that could fund those demolitions?
My understanding of this is used to the administration of the tax title process, the legal aspects of it, not necessarily managing the properties. I would check on that. I, I like, I'm going to vote in no against it, because I've been asking for funds for two particular properties in my district that have been long abandoned, boarded up, that I need money to demolish these properties, but that's something that this could be held before, I would hope to keep the funds in that line.
On the motion, Counsel Hughes.
Thank you. Just Deb, a point of information, I think the auditor has some information regarding Counsel O'Callaghan's questions, so through you to the auditor, Matt Long, Eric, do you have some?
Thank you.
Information?
Thank you.
Uh, yes, Counsel, I believe what the Treasury Act is saying is correct. This is basically used for legal, like the ant court and the registrative deeds, that's what we can use this money, this money could offer use for any kind of demolition.
Thank you for clarification.
Okay, so the motion remains to cut the tax sub budget by $20,000.
Counsel King.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel DeWanna.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
No.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Fars.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Kamuchi.
Yes.
Chairman Paul.
Yes.
Okay, Deb, third one we're looking at this evening, is on debt. My fellow counsels can be found on page fifteen of section two, page seventy-one of section three.
Okay, this, you know, this really ties into a lot of the discussion earlier tonight, this is what we have for debt service for this year '17, on the long-term debt category. The biggest decrease here is, is we paid off finally the debt that was associated with Quincy Medical Center, when it was split from the city as a department many years ago. We did have some special legislation to pay that back over, I guess, over 10 years. So that, that final payment, the final paydown on that was last, was, was in July of this year '16, so that line item is gone. And then, within the other line items, if we start looking at it here, might be able to, the refunding of bonds we did last year, that gave us some more payable interest rates, and also some of the debt that we have been paying, it has its own, fully satisfied some of that debt service, so, you know, there's a number of areas.
I will, I definitely.
There's a motion for a move passage, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I have it. Coughlin, next one, there's the short-term debt, can be found on page sixteen of section two, page seventy of section three.
The short-term debt could be those bond extension notes that, once again, Senator went to earlier tonight. This is the short-term debt that we have not, um, incurred to, to long-term debt, to the bonds.
Any questions?
With approval of the motion?
With approval on the motion, Counsel Calhoun.
This doesn't include DIF.
It doesn't include, but this doesn't include DIF.
I'm sorry, does or does not?
It does, yes. Yes, it does.
Uh, so. Do we know how much of this is DIF?
Um.
And how is that reimbursed? In the taxpayer not paying upfront strategy being moved, Counsel?
Yeah, the DIF, I think, is about 800,000. Oh, I'm sorry. The DIF is about 800,000. So what we do is, we'll be making, you know, each year we make a general entry, and we, we transfer into the fund, the debt fund, we transfer the debt service amount, and also the, the revenue, you know, we talked about earlier, the, the, the increase in, in the valuation of DIF district.
So I guess what I would a little accused here, so. The DIF debt is supposed to be paid for with increases from economic growth in the downtown. This one isn't, this one's being paid by the taxpayers. $800,000 being paid by the taxpayers, is that, perhaps through you, Mr. Walker, who should be sent there?
No, the, this money will be offset by my, it's in a different account, that is revenue generated by the district.
So this money's offset?
Correct.
So that it balances out from the DIF to the, where is that represented in the budget?
I don't know that, there are probably a few other ones in there that have all the offsets on it, so they're represented in budget line.
Right, there's no offset, there's no offset in line 590235, so tell me the account line number that the eight hundred thousand is offset.
Sure, we can find that for you.
I see you, the gentleman rising here, anxious to speak, through you, Mr. Chair, to Counsel Ben.
May through the chair to Counsel Kamuchi. The DIF district collects taxes, which would then go into the general fund. The general fund would then transfer into the DIF account that was set up, the amount of monies to pay off the taxes. So basically, all revenue, when the DIF started, day one, they took what the existing tax base was on the beginning of the DIF, and everything above that became incremental. The incremental monies that go into the DIF are collected as regular revenue, regular taxes on the district. They are then calculated and separated into the DIF fund, the DIF fund pays the DIF debt, whatever the excess monies in the DIF fund are, then go back into the general fund.
Whatever the excess funds in the DIF account are, no, no, I'm with you, Counsel, whatever the excess funds are beyond what we're paying for the DIF debt.
Correct.
Okay, but still, this $800,000, and there's no numbers in front of us relative to the DIF, but the $800,000 is showing as a liability in the budget to the taxpayers outside the DIF zone, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, but then it is paid, then it is paid as, from the DIF account, which is where the, the, the transfer is made from the general fund, if you will. It's a journal entry into the, into the DIF fund for the dollar amount that was required to pay down the DIF debt. So it is.
Including short-term interest?
Yes.
For money that hasn't been borrowed yet or yet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your, your response.
Counsel, Counsel.
Yep. I did already.
Any further discussion on the motion? Motion, Counsel O'Callaghan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, Deb. Deb, looking at the actuals for the interest on short-term debt, we see that at the 1.8%, $420,000 is expended to date, is it quarterly payment that we close out the year, or why is that, why is that not being expended? So, so your actuals?
What, you have the actuals?
Yeah, so appropriate appropriation, 12.90, which is also, that's in the budget book. Then, you're going to spend the 422 or 24, with the remainder available budget to close out fiscal year, $39,000. So is it quarterly payment, or why is it showing so up?
It's not quarterly, it's, it's a year after we actually issue the ban, and we have payments due in June. So it's not necessarily, that would be, we issued some bans last June, and they are payable this June, so they haven't paid yet.
I see, okay, so it's just a payment or a payment schedule, that's a fiscal year end payment, got it, okay. I was hoping we, you know, refinance our debt or something, but.
No, it's not quite due, got it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on the motion? Counsel Ryan.
A quick question, and I was hoping to agree to, to, Mr. Chair, if you could come up here. I have a question about the debt, as, as Counsel Kamuchi has suggested, just to want to get some clarification from you about the board before. So you'd mentioned to him, again, to clarify that when the funds come in, it goes into the general fund, and from there, we hold it, to pay back what we need for the debt, is that correct?
Well, the entirety of the monies that are charged have to be accounted for in the DIF district, okay? So if you had X amount of, X amount of properties that are in the DIF district, all those monies that are collected in the DIF district are then bookkeep, there's a bookkeeping exercise that actually establishes, that is the DIF income. That the DIF income is utilized to pay down the short-term DIF debt now, and later, when it is created, when it is turned into long-term debt, that DIF. when it is turned into long-term debt, that DIF, those DIF accounts will then pay off the long-term debt as well.
Okay, is there any way, I don't know, maybe just maybe you, your honor, to get a line item or a list of things that we've paid for out of the DIF fund?
Only debt, that's the only thing we spent out of that, oh, excuse me. What the expenditures from the DIF have been since inception, we have records of it. We could give you that information, but it's, it's quite extensive. It's forty, forty million dollars. It paid for the concourse, it paid for, you know, many, many different items, but we can get you an account.
Yeah, I think that's just helpful because that's, I mean, from the whole conversation we've had tonight, for me anyways, the new process, it seems like the DIF is very closely tied to what we're going to be approving on the budget here today. So I don't know if it would be, but for me, I think they're really helpful to, I feel just.
That's not the problem, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel. Any further discussion on the motion? Motion for short-term debt. Follow the favor. I both size habit, thank you very much. I'm going to see you, Mr. Stone.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the health department, welcome Mr. Shelly. And Mr. Shelly's budget can be found on page forty-eight of section two, page ninety of section three. Evening, group.
Evening, everyone. All righty. I'm really, really excited to be here. This is probably the first time that I've been actually been able to add a new position into my budget in a long time. It's not necessarily a new position, it was a position that was in my budget all the way up until about two thousand and three. And it's the director of Quincy Public Health Nurses. He called the nurse supervisor back in two thousand and three, but during the tough economic times that we had back during recession, when our nursing director retired, it was a position that went unfilled. So now that we've actually had the opportunity to have a chance to put some money back into the public health deposit budget, I'm excited to bring this on. It's a union position, it's within the QPEA union. We'll be advocating, there is a person in my office that's qualified. We do have a job description put together for this position. One of the things that I'm really excited about this position is that we're going to create a formal internship program with a lot of the area schools within our area. And the schools that we've already spoken to to start doing this project are the BU School of Public Health, Mass School of Pharmacy, Quincy College is on board, Curry College Nursing Program is on board. There are several others that we're getting ready to meet with on a regular basis. The intern program, it needs someone that can oversee interns. I get requests for interns for schools of public health and for nursing program on a regular basis. I don't have anyone who can supervise these individuals. We take maybe one intern a year, maybe two interns a year. There is such a demand out there to have interns placed in public health departments of field experience they just can't get in the classroom. So by adding this position to the budget, I really feel that we can utilize anywhere between ten and twelve interns a year that go out and do a lot of the basic public health things that we do. We do a lot of rat inspections, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. This is a position that we can get instant, you know, someone out there instantly to go and look at a property if they think they have burrows or something like that. We work with the State Department of Public Health on a Prevention Wellness Trust Fund program. We've been doing this program for three years. We do this program with nine other organizations in the town of Weymouth. The state legislature, back to two thousand and fourteen, awarded about five million dollars, or twenty-five million dollars for this. There's nine organizations around the state that do it. And Quincy-Weymouth Partnership is one of them. Man Community Health is the overseer of the grant that we participate with that matter. One of the long goals of the grant is to create sustainability for programs that we've done throughout the past couple of years. We've gone twelve community buildings in the city. We've done a balance programs to help reduce seniors falling. We've done healthy eating classes. These are programs that without internships that we're going to have coming in, you're not going to be able to be sustainable. Public health, of course, is chapter one eleven of Mass General laws. We entail an awful lot. We do the awful lot of housing inspections within the city, restaurant inspection within the city, nurses with clinical disease, hoarding issues that we have in the city. This is a position that will be able to oversee a host of different items that we come across on a daily basis. The other big additional item on my budget is an additional nine thousand dollars in pest control. It goes from eleven thousand to twenty thousand. This year we had eleven thousand dollars allocated for it. And I probably have spent close to about sixteen thousand dollars, seventeen thousand dollars on it already. And just taking money from other accounts to cover it. We have, usually the health department turns in a small amount of money at the end of every fiscal year that goes back to the general fund. So.
Counselor.
I have a question for Commissioner Shelly. Could you just talk to me about the new position and how you set the particular salary? Is it, I know it's a union position, is that a?
It's a position that we equated with the chief sanitaryian position. It's a huge responsibility that you're going to oversee and to work closely with these different colleges. They really expect someone that's experienced and knows the field that they're going to be doing their internship with.
You know, I don't doubt that, but I just, I just wonder about that particular number. Is that, so you equated it with the chief sanitaryian?
Yes.
And that's why you said that to come? Okay, and you haven't hired for the position perhaps?
No, I haven't been funding it, how could I have?
Right, of course not, no, I understand. Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks.
Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where is, you said that there's somebody in your office that's currently qualified for this role?
Yes.
Where do they currently sit?
They are public health nurses.
Public health.
True. Okay. So we would hire an additional public health nurse and she would start at the step one salary of a public health nurse.
So that's included in this one thirty-eight requested for two seventeen?
That actually, that number would come down a little bit because that actually is the amount that was in there if I didn't have this position. So that would stay as a step ten employee to Ruth Jones is. So when we do hire a new nurse, they'll come in the step one position.
Okay, I just see a couple of things here, and you were just up here a couple of weeks ago. Gracious to give you the time and, you know, we're getting calls left and right about this issue. It's been highly publicized for better or for worse. And I see two things on here that are a little discouraging. One, the annual pest control, nine thousand dollars, asking for increase, is that enough? You know, I see that this position that you'd like to create might be able to handle such things as rat inspections inclusive in this internship program, but is that the most valuable use for this role? Or is this something that we need to address this issue now? And secondly, I see a decrease for request and funding for outreach and translator. Now I know that in my work, we have a significant population that do not speak English, so I don't know why that number's coming down if we need resources in order to communicate how to take care of trash, how to take care of issues so that we can further prevent this pest problem that we're having. So I just want to hear from you how this person in this new role, which is a considerable role, is going to cover those two areas which I believe are inefficient.
Well, I don't think that we're actually inefficient as far as the rat control problem. I think we came across extraordinary literature two years ago and we see how quickly rats can multiply and how easily they adapt and how easily they can afford food when they're spread out. I think that we're basically doing everything that has happened in the other major cities that surround Boston. So I really think that the twenty thousand dollars is enough on the pest control pot. Again, I've spent about seventeen thousand already, there's just a couple more weeks left in this fiscal year. I think that next year in the summer is not going to be bad. We have seen an increase of calls, but we have not seen an increase of hoarding.
Yep.
So I, I'm not saying that they're not out there, but I think we get a lot of people that get excited when they hear it and they give us a call just to get reassured. And we have no problem going out to their property and doing whatever we have to reassure them that we had.
Yeah, perception is reality and this is city money. We're here to serve the city and the constituents. So I just want to be sure that even if there is no perceived problem, it's very difficult to convince people otherwise because we're still getting calls, it always might exist or not exist.
When we do go out, I mean, it is the homeowner's responsibility, I mean, if there are burrows on their property. We can send a letter and say, he and you about burrows in the property, they may get a letter. Three days after we discovered the burrows in the property and now you're going to take care of it. Maybe you're not going to take care of it. Maybe you don't even respond to us. Forty days or by now we have to send a number back. So it's much easier for us to just take immediate action to solve the problem before it escalates. All it takes is twenty-three days for them to stop reading.
Right.
So we wanted to make sure that, so it is taxpayers' dollars, but we're really helping taxpayers by taking care of the problem on their own private property.
Right.
And as far as the position with the, the director of nursing, the amount of experience and the amount of knowledge that we have at the health department to train additional young people that are all in graduate programs, that are eager to learn and are willing to go out there and participate in public health, as I mentioned. We have such an opportunity to do clinical internships and regular internships with the different schools of public health and different nursing schools throughout this area that for us not to take advantage of it would be hugely safe for the taxpayers by having this one additional person on there that has oversight and reports of the colleagues that are giving us these interns. We're getting twelve, ten to twelve employees that are unpaid, that are all professional, all going for master degrees, all going for nursing degrees, all at our fingertips for eight, twelve weeks in the course of a year.
And, sorry, in that service, that role couldn't be provided or served as a role that's?
We could do one intern. We could, all these interns need direct students.
So saying one additional person, which is this role?
Yes.
Plus filling that spot which is going to be vacated and that, that multiply equals twelve.
Yeah, interns, yeah, we'll be able, we'll be able to put interns in the environmental health aspect of operation. If we have a building that has to be taken down, we can take a public student from the school of public health from BU that's former environmental degree in public health and they can come up and we can walk through demolition with them, give them hands-on experience like that. But that would be a person who would oversee that particular intern for that particular loan. You still need someone that's going to be able to report back to the university program from what they've actually done. These interns all have to develop programs that can be beneficial to the health department and to their career, to help them with their career.
Have we looked into any sort of public or grant financing that might be available to fulfill this role?
We would not, I would look for grant money to run programs through this role. We work very closely with Chinon under twenty, Community Health Network Alliance is, I think it's twenty-four of them in the state. We have Chinon under twenty of the Blue Bills Chinon. They offer nearly fifty thousand dollars worth of scholarships every single year, small grant scholarships. But those are scholarships, those are grants that interns can apply for, get and then put a program on that's going to be beneficial to the rest of the state.
I'm having a tough time with this one. I'm not, I'm not necessarily convinced that this is the right use of money in this department.
They're also overseeing the two other public health nurses, all of our clinical disease, all of our sick, restaurant complaints that we have with foodborne illnesses, all of our TB complaints, our TB control issues that we deal with, the patients that we have to walk and save.
And so who are currently overseeing right now?
Right now we have two public health nurses.
Okay, and who want?
I want one more.
One more?
Yes.
Do you have the numbers to support, you know, what are the calls that are coming in? What's the volume that, you know what I mean? This is a, this is a big, this is a big item here.
Ah, I'm looking to expand programs. We can continue if I'm staying where we are, but when the Prevention Wellness Trust Fund grant runs out next year, all the programs that we're running in senior houses for the SOF, the healthy eating classes for SOF. I have nine employees I believe. You set up fifteen, you set up about twelve nurses back in the sixties and seventies. Now down to two. Recording issues.
No, I understand public health.
Recording issues, that is incredible. We get calls once a week to walk and see.
Okay. I would like to see that job description. I don't know how we can, someone do that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like, yeah, and I'd like to put a motion forward for this position on hold.
On the motion, Counselor Kane, did you have a question?
This is before you had your last, you had a question, the Mr. Chairman. A quick question because I'm, I'm going to call you about the translation services and the outreach, the translation services and the outreach and cutting that. And so as we're going through these line items and seeing, you know, how much we spent based on how much we pledged it last year, the educational supplies line item, we only use eight point three percent of that. Can you just speak to what that is? Is it educational supplies for the community or is it educational supplies for your staff in order to get them up to speed?
Educational supplies, we run a servesafe program out of the health department, Ruth Jones runs it. And it's a national test, it's an all-day program and.
I'm sorry, please.
Yeah.
And so the educational supplies are for your staff? It's not for, it's not part of or used for any outreach or translation?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Harris.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you ahead of time for Wednesday night coming, coming to our community meeting. Healthcare is something, if I didn't speak up, my, my colleague wouldn't speak to you tonight. Because this is important, you mentioned it seems, the road interest problem we have right now, it's just beginning, there's all sorts of problems at this position.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, and to get more interns, you know, I know we all know somebody who's in nursing school, I do, that it's a great opportunity to, to really build on for one, for one thing, that eighty-five thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars is, is not too, too small enough because most nurses may well over that. And instead of you going to the meeting, I'm going to say, an intern and this, this position could be there.
Absolutely.
And could be going out throughout all of, all of, all of Austin, throughout the city, visiting, visiting our.
Ruth does an unbelievable job, she would be incredible in this position.
And I, I support your position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Shelly, Ruth Jones is one of the best places the city has given. She's been on well. When we talk about outreach, not only does she do our crazy.
Point personal. I cannot stress, we keep personalizing the budget.
That's not wrong.
Well, again, this is not about deeper personality, this is about proposed position.
It's about community need, right? So it's about, for me, it's about community need. So in particular for me, what I've been utilizing a lot here at departments, we talked earlier about, we've referenced visiting on orders, how many mental health issues and how many times of visits and how difficult situations are and how potentially departments are going to respond to. How many mental health issues and how many times of visits and how difficult situations are and how potentially your department's unable to respond to. And I just have seen, I spend some of the long time in the discussion I've got with you in regards to whether it's, you know, bringing seniors in to help the clinics with flu shots, whether it's my constituent to the neighbor's economy because the neighbor put a tarp down and shut their water off and, you know, has a significant amount of health issues that now need access to. And I really find the level of skill set and what we're able to do and the work that's done on a citywide scale, that you've been understaffed. And I think you've taken, take, you've probably taken the hits through the tougher times. And particularly, what I'm seeing just from my own interaction with your department, can subs, I can substantiate for my constituents who have called for that, who've called for the whorehouse, who've called for the mental health issues. I mean, I'm gonna check every single box of responsiveness, um, through what your department needs are fulfilling, um, the needs of the constituents that I represent. So, I support those of your department. I like your ingenuity that we can afford ten to twelve, uh, additional staff. How can we bring those on to, to fulfill needs within the community and then help develop skill sets and experience within our health systems in the area? So, I think that's terrific. I think that you, um, you know, grants tend to not fund positions, but they fund programs. And I appreciate your, um, creativity in going out and getting funds for what we can do. I will say, I am disappointed to not see double funded on the outreach translation. I mean, I just feel that it's something that I'm always looking for, um, help with constituents and getting, getting information and getting content out. And I just would have liked to have seen that double funded. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Mr. Shaley, I'm going to, uh, respect the motion put forward from Vice Chairman on Finance, Counselor Kane. Are you clear about what his ask is in terms of, um, the information he's requesting regarding this position?
I think once put on hold.
Right, when the third employee is looking for?
I'm, I'm looking for a description of this job. Yeah, I want a job description.
So, in the way that we structured out these three hearings was that would be essentially front loaded this evening and we're allowed, we would allow ourselves additional time just in the event that there was a request for additional information. I'll leave that up to you. We have two scheduled hearings. Um, you know, if you can turn it around and you'd like a beer back before us, I still get it. No, I think you have a, a few weeks till we, um, wrap up at the end of the month. Conception of the noise.
You also have a job description filed before the other day Monday.
So, we have the motion on the floor to, uh, hold this budget on fair and balanced. Close. Nice to have it. Thank you very much for coming out to see Mr. Shaley. Just one point for him.
Counselor.
Again, I wanted to, um, express this again that, because again, I'm very conscious of the fact that we have new people here, but it's always been a courtesy, there's specific council requests, although it's usually we've granted, bodies grant that because it means that they have serious questions that they want answered. And the tradition's always been pretty much to give them that opportunity to do it. So, um, I just don't want to get into folks over hold. It's always been kind of, uh, again, as I said, a courtesy.
I think we just extend the time there to see.
Right.
I appreciate your, your input. Next item on the agenda is Veteran Services, Mr. George Nicholson. Folks can find the information on page forty-seven of section two, page ninety-seven of section three. Welcome, Mr. Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. It's a pleasure to finally stand before the council to discuss the budget. Um, I started just a little over a year, year and a half ago. And last year's budget, uh, at the time my name was called, roughly about half the time it took me to get to the podium, my budget was passed yesterday. My name is Jester, and I thank you all. I thought that I would start very quickly, given the new councils we have, give you a quick update, uh, and background on what the Veteran Service Office is. Here in Massachusetts, veteran benefits have been paid to veterans of our Commonwealth going back to the Plymouth Colony. After the end of the Civil War, when President Lincoln had vowed that America should take care of its veterans, their widows and their orphans, Massachusetts established Chapter One Fifteen to provide financial assistance in conjunction with that mandate. Chapter One Fifteen requires that there be a veteran's agent in every city and town. The towns are largely managed, afford one itself, then a consortium of towns would pick one. And towns are mandated, cities and towns are mandated to fund Chapter One Fifteen. And assuming that the veteran's agents do their jobs correctly, seventy-five cents on every dollar that's appropriated by the city is approved and refunded back to the city. When I first took this job, I, the two thousand and fifteen budget had already been passed. There was a problem with the, uh, my predecessor who'd gotten ill and wasn't able to do all that he was supposed to do. Um, and the state got very concerned because my office up to that point, my, my, had done, had a great reputation through the excellence in the preparations that they had done for appropriation authorization out of the state. And they started seeing a lot of mistakes, a lot of delays, a lot of errors. They ended up coming down to the office to take a look, and then they went to the mayor and told the mayor he had a very serious problem. And he was facing a complete suspension of Chapter One Fifteen reimbursements if he didn't take care of, get the problem addressed. He brought in the, uh, former retired VSO to come back for a while. He worked with some state representatives trying to get the office squared away. Uh, the former VSO had only so many hours as a retiree that he was allowed to work. And it became more imperative that the mayor get somebody on board. There was a lot of things for me to deal with in terms of damage control. And catching up and rectifying records, getting it straight, job assignments done right, reviewing records to see that the operation got back to the quality level that we had before. So, the two thousand and sixteen budget, the mayor, he talked on the progress I was making, he loved the budget, the two sixteen budget. And as I said, he very generously approved it before I even got to the microphone, which all these experiences were like that. But tonight, it's a little different. I have a little better grip on what the financial situation is. And when you look at some of the, uh, the appropriation issues that are coming to before us now, um, if you have any answer any questions that you've got.
Excuse me, Counselor Finn. First off, George, let me thank you for your service, both as a veteran for the country. And also, um, quite honestly, the situation you found yourself in and the job that you did, uh, in my mind is, was, was tremendous. And again, it's a unique set of circumstances, obviously, but you got back on top of that, and that was, that was, uh, good. Um, you know, the good news side of things is there's a significant adjustment in your salary because that, quite honestly, is comparable with the study in some respects that you did last time in terms of position. When you were just coming in, I mean, I basically support that because I think, again, it was most, uh, agency, um, of most of the various departments, again, what you're doing is equivalent. And the work that you're doing, you know, online has true value. That's the good news. First, a simple thing, and this is more of a housekeeping thing, and I think we'll probably see a drop of the budget. The premium pay line item has been replicated throughout the budget, different departments, and it's a small amount of money, but, um, again, there's a number of places where there is no premium pay eligible essentially. So, um, I would just cut, motion that we cut the seven hundred and eighty-three dollars out of that. Again, through, uh, you, Mr. Chairman, to the auditor, is it, again, is that an accurate view of this?
Uh, yes, this, Counselor, this, um, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, um, is for the, I believe, that, I believe, retired in two thousand and fifteen.
So, again, that's the first one we've got, specifically.
Okay. I'm always going to.
For you, Mr. Chairman. On, on that, um, previous management.
Uh, my knowledge, I've been informed that that is a contractual item.
So, where it wasn't expended last year, it's still required to be funded this year?
Through, uh, my staff, but through, uh, you, Mr. Chairman, specifically to the auditor, that contractual obligation pursuing is a union negotiated and for persons no longer in that department, right?
Uh, generally speaking, um, the people that get the premium pay are non-union department heads that have been here, that have been here over ten years.
So, then it's not contractual?
It is.
It's pretty.
It's not contractual. If you're here ten, over ten years, you receive a premium pay.
So, it's not contractual?
No, it's not contractual.
So, we love to respect the six terms. And again, it's a housekeeping matter because there's a number of places in the budget that are, so, but, um...
Okay, a motion on the floor to cut seven hundred and eighty-three dollars for premium pay. Any further discussion on the motion? Matter of fact, if you would please hold it hold.
Counselor Kane.
No.
Counselor Corn.
No.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
No.
Counselor Forrest.
No.
Counselor Yang.
Yes.
Counselor Pabucci.
Yes.
Chairman Paul.
No.
Well, uh, you just picked up another seven eighty-three through discretionary purposes. Uh, so, let's go to another specific line item. And should we hold that as the, I want to keep that in mind when dealing with the veterans. And I know that this is kind of a sensitive issue for people. So, when we go into those different areas where the premium pay is in, where no person exists, are we gonna have that same standard because we're not dealing with veterans? Just a question for my colleagues. Now, however, for more serious, um, issue in my mind, and I credit, quite honestly, we recognize it and maybe some cuts in relation to it. Because, again, um, but I, but I did want to ask some questions. How many unduplicated veterans do you think you deal with roughly in years seeking benefits for the office?
Unduplicated, um, now, that would be a little hard to determine. When I started, my Chapter One Fifteen role was at two eighty-nine. By the end of two thousand and fifteen, I had whittled that down from various forces to two hundred and fifty.
Let me give you first number, James, George.
First number, when I first took over, caseload was two hundred and eighty-nine. That's Chapter One Fifteen.
Right.
That's the, and still, even with the rates they are now, my office says the second wife's caseload in the state outside the city was. When was the point in there that you, that's, we do it? And now, right now, we're running just about two hundred. And these are people that, for one reason, a lot of my revenue off because they were underemployed and now are re-employed, fully employed. I got additional benefits for them, they needed to be on our list. And, uh, and some that very few, quite frankly, didn't belong, didn't cooperate. And that's the price you pay. It's hard, I, the human dynamic for me is such, we never know who's gonna come into the office. And, uh, you know, I get three hundred walk-ins a month. A hundred of those are regulars on my roles on average. And, uh, I probably get three times that for fall calls, thirty more a day. Again, and some of those questions dealing with One Fifteen, a lot because people are not aware of my background, there's a lot of the questions coming in about benefits across the board and not just One Fifteen.
Yeah, so you're, you're linking them up tomorrow, appropriate benefits.
Uh, that's part of the mission. It's absolutely part of the mission.
To the extent that, and again, I don't need this for this particular project, but to the extent that you can quantify less than four, it's incredibly credible and important.
You can't, I can't quantify it in terms of a projection.
Not talking about the projection.
I would know at the, I would know at the end of the year.
No, I, I know what I'm talking about, but that's exactly what I'm talking about, in terms of history, that you can, particularly, what would be credible is, is, um, the other referrals and the other types of benefits you're directing people towards. That would be incredibly helpful to know. I, um...
Well, I give you, for instance, um, I just set up with Mark Crossman to do the next veteran's corner, I'm saying. And, uh, I dealt with different issues on the first year. This one will deal very explicitly targeted at senior citizens, the elderly, the elderly veteran, that's low income, and they don't realize that they're eligible to come to us for benefits. Additional funding for prescription medical coverage, things like that. This is a utilization they're not taking advantage of. I can guarantee that will generate more clients for us. I can't tell you how many until next year.
It's unfortunate, in my mind, that guys, as agents generally, and of course, as you know, it's mixed around the state in terms of how that manifests itself.
Correct.
But, um, yes, SVP, I would love for you guys to have control of those resources. Serious, because again, that in terms of getting that out as a preventive for veterans that are in need, I think that that would be excellent. However...
That would be a legislative issue.
Uh, the history, I've been on this, uh, a part of this specific line item, particularly on the benefits line item now for sixteen years. The way that this often worked, I was a big advocate in relation to this, was when Hank, he would come up, make it three times a year with a number of appropriations based on the needs that started to emerge. While I'm proposing, I'm proposing, and again, before everybody screams here, I am gonna propose a cut, but let me explain why in relation to this. Is that, as you know, these dollars are, that are spent, ones that are spent, it's seventy-five cents back on the dollar, right? Remember, it was a state reimbursement. But the difficulty and what was so wrong in some respects, again, if you were coming in, you could not, at that point, fathom what that is. But, that surplus, whatever that is, that's built on the backs, obviously, of taxpayers. Because there's no match associated with that, it's only the matches on what you spend. And to your credit, I know you put forward a, a cut of three hundred thousand dollars, but looking, again, based on the trends of, of actuals that, that, where we're at, I mean, they're about one point oh nine, um, in, in this year in terms of that benefit. So, even if we're operating under what you're proposing at this point, um, that would, uh, you'd still be well within, um, significant surplus. So, what I'm proposing is, I'm proposing, I think, again, with the caveat that you can, if need changes, you can come back. But I'm proposing that we cut in an additional hundred thousand dollars. And knowing full well that if that need changes, and I really don't think based on the demographics per se, and particularly the work that you're doing, that we're gonna see that dramatically change. So, rather than building that on a taxpayer, um, I think if we were to cut it, you knew that you can come back. As I've never heard, I've never seen anybody come back before this body of veteran service and request appropriation they didn't receive. So, again, that's, that's my motion, and I hope it's accepted in the spirit that it's taken and not, you know, meant to be immediately recast as a...
As you, as you know, uh, with my, coming out of federal civil service, my federal job, the, I've been more than well schooled in, in taxpayer appreciation. And my job to marshal taxpayers' interest as well as those of the veterans. So, we took, I was aware only that for years and years, the VSO is coming into supplemental appropriations, and I knew they would get them, that that was never an issue. But the, uh, the mayor, apparently, and this is hearsay from this point, because he's not here to back me up, he'll remember the details, all the details of our conversation. But he had checked with Hank, when Hank came back out of retirement, to see what he was coming up with for figures, and he matched those, he got some additional information from Mass Net Services Headquarters. And based on that, came up with that figure that he used in two thousand and fifteen. And the, uh, and then what we funded it again for two thousand and sixteen. To, and by the time I had done the work I had in two thousand and fifteen, you know that we gave back.
Right.
And because we've done more... And because we've done more reductions, we gave back, it's gonna be even more this year. That was very concerning to me because that clearly says that we're not budgeted appropriately if you, if you've got that kind of surplus. So we talked with the mayor, and said absolutely, Mary Ann and I sat down, put all the figures together. And we agreed that, uh, to reduce it by another three hundred would be a comfortable margin. The only difference that we, the two elements we don't know at this point is what we will see for client increase with the, the next show. And we don't know, because the budget's not set, what this will do to the state's cost of living increase because we'll give that, uh, to our clients when the state finally approves that. And I thought for the moment that that was acceptable, it was a comfortable margin. Knowing if it wasn't, if three hundred wasn't comfortable, we could come back for supplemental approche, appropriation. And if it turns out that, uh, two hundred is not a comfortable margin, no, we could still come back for a, uh, supplemental appropriation. We don't have a crystal ball, and obviously don't know, uh, exactly what we'll be looking at for funding needs in the, the next, during the two thousand seventeen budget. Uh, but I'm just starting to get a pretty good grip on where we are.
All right, I think where we're gonna get it, I think, based on the fact you initiated that specific cut as part of your budget.
Okay, now, the V A is, roughly five thousand veterans who've got the city, is adding about one hundred million dollars a year to the city conference through their salaries. So we're, uh, front-loading and back-loading, trying to take care of the veterans and get the city well-funded and versed.
Great. Thank you.
And what's, what's wrong, continue?
No, it's okay. The motion's in progress. I'm good. Thank you.
Move approval, man?
Move approval.
Move approval.
Hall of fair?
Aye.
Folks, I have it. Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Solicitor Timmons with the Law Office, which can be found on page eighteen, section two, and page seventy-three of section thirty. Welcome this evening, Solicitor Timmons.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Good evening and good evening to the members of the Squad. Um, mindful of my colleagues behind me, most of whom are overseen by more robust departments than mine, I'll be somewhat brief. Um, as you all know, I manage, uh, an operation where there are four licensed attorneys who require a little supervision on my part. And, um, the page, um, page eighteen of the budget is, with the exception of the, um, pay increase, pay adjustment, it's the same since then, the past several years that I've been before you. Um, administratively, we don't have to make any changes gratuitously. Um, the last page of my budget, the judgment's budget, is not being changed as well because frankly, um, that, that number's been the same for as long as I've been the solicitor. It's very hard to project what might happen in that account. Um, the money that's important here is the settlement funds, uh, because we're able to address matters that generally become, um, taken Germany up to the phone call levels of void counsels or, there are matters where I can resolve something before it gets to the lawsuit.
Counselor Timmons, we're just gonna handle the first part of the Law Office and sequentially, we're gonna...
No, I understand. I'm giving a quick overview, and then I was gonna stop so that we could do each of the three.
Sure.
And then the, the middle item, the general fund issue, the workers' comp, that's the only area where there's been a change. And frankly, that's because we have an aging workforce, and we found particularly this year, um, that there were a number of, um, folks who went out injured, um, several of the pediatric injuries, and that's why there's an increase in that budget. So I, I'm prepared to answer any questions and then go through sequentially, but that's an overview of the issues that our department presents tonight.
Any questions on the Law Office, Judge Counselor Pabucci?
Thank you. The, uh, good evening, Solicitor Timmons. No good evening for me?
Well, good evening, but I've...
You wouldn't wait till what I said first?
I know when I'm Solicitor Timmons, I'm a trouble.
No, no.
So I'm bracing myself.
Uh, the principal clerk, one position, looking at the, um, the actuals, I think, I'm sorry, the longevity thing, uh, five one zero one four zero, uh, under your personal services, is one twenty-four point five percent of budgeted amount. How do we, how do we not appropriately allocate enough money to cover longevity?
Which lines? Oh, I, I'm not certain how...
Okay, how do we miss out? We know how long people have worked here. We know when they get a lump.
The longevity pay, right. I'm not certain to what now that breaks out. Um, I know that, um, our principal clerk's been with me since day one, so she's been with me eight years. Um, but the, um, other positions, legal counsel position has been with me since day one. That's Dana Pedkin. And the assistant solicitor position, uh, the timing on those offices has changed because we've had a couple of assistants move.
So the, the, is the longevity amount accurate for this?
Yes. And that's calculated based on a formula. It's, I, I've, some of you would say I've been around too long, but I've certainly been around for a bit. And some of this is reflective of my presence here for a while. And I know that Paul Heinz has been in city government for a while as well.
Three assistant city solicitors currently?
Uh, well, the breakdown is...
One legal counsel and three...
Correct. And two assistants.
Two assistants.
Right. Mr. Maxey is the outside counsel, I beg pardon, contracted position, line five three zero three zero three.
I see that. What is that?
That's the workers' comp.
And that's because we don't have an attorney from the angles at the in-house?
Well, he, he is an attorney, and he does handle it, uh, but he works in concert with...
I thought that he did. I didn't say that he wasn't, but that he did. But we don't have someone who does workers' comp in in-house. That's why, do we contract outside?
Well, it says contracted, but he's in-house basically. He's got an office, you, I think you've got up and seen. It's, it's how we do it. It's not a full-time position. Um, he works in concert with the, um, personal services line and workers' comp, the sixty-eight thousand administration line. Um, so the two of them together manage workers' compensation.
All right. In, in terms of, um, the outside counsel budget, we overspent that line significantly, not in the past year?
Correct.
All right. That's not reflected in the actuals. I'm not seeing it in the actuals. Perhaps... Perhaps sent through you, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the auditor. The outside counsel line shows a percentage used as ninety-eight point eight percent. That's in terms of, not the annual budget amount, but the amount, there was a total amount due to the monies that were sought after the budget amount.
Correct.
Is that how we do things, in terms of percentage used in the actuals?
Well, what the, what the actuals reflect is, you'll see your original appropriation of ninety-five thousand dollars. Then you'll see some under transfers and adjustments. You see an additional two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, which that would be additional appropriation going in there. But that gives you prior year encumbrances that are carried forward. Then you will see what your revised budget is. At thirty, um, three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, we've extended to date three hundred and thirty-five thousand seven forty-four. We still have opening conferences of thirty-one thousand eight twenty-six. So your available budget remains at four thousand four thirty-eight. So, given all those numbers that I just gave you, that is calculated based on that. It's not calculated based on the original appropriation as to the amount of spending.
Please, if we get, based on...
It would be over.
I mean, three hundred and twenty percent of the budget.
Correct. But as the, the way the budget is set up and the way the, the, the new system is set up, we can't overspend on those lines. So we would never show an over, like, an overplay of the percentage used in this particular line item.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Madam Honor. And that was mostly due to one case?
No, well, two cases. Um, one was the Woodard case, finishing that one up. And the second one was a case, um, Scotty Thing versus, actually, three. Scotty Thing versus the City of Quincy. And then we have the McGonigal case, um, case involving the police department. What happens is, um, on two of the three, we ended up with conflict issues and had to hire outside counsel. That was the problem.
Okay. I'm conflicted by this number a little bit, um, by this budget line a little bit, uh, for a couple of different reasons. But one, which is I, I, again, I have a problem in general when we're asked to vote for things. We're asked to expend monies that have essentially already been spent. And that are, that have been already, that have already been spent.
You're saying the ninety-five thousand?
No. I didn't finish my sentence. When we budgeted last year ninety-five thousand dollars, and then we spent three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars or three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, I would have thought that that number would have been built into the budget. So what we were presented with was a bill from attorneys who had already expended time on a case. And if we didn't approve the three hundred thousand dollars at that point, or whatever it was, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand in overages, then people who did work would face that the city wouldn't get paid. So, my concern...
Yeah. Point of order, the, the auditor has some context that we wanted us to share with the group.
Sure. That's a point of order.
Um, thank you, counsel. Um, just to give further clarification on what I'm speaking of right now. Um, the two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars that you're seeing transferred in that particular account, a hundred and seven thousand dollars of that was prior year encumbrances. Um, then back in February of this year, there was an additional appropriation sought for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So basically, assuming what happened, I have to go back and look at when we expended the funds. Um, we had encumbrances in there that allowed us to, to further spend. And then when there was further, um, funds needed, the solicitor came before the council with an appropriation for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars and had to spend in February.
So the prior year encumbrances was how much?
A hundred and seven thousand nine dollars.
And then we were, we were brought, they brought one hundred and seven?
Yeah, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars was the council money that was brought before the council back in February of this year.
So what was the encumbrance made?
Um, the encumbrances were from last fiscal year, so they, they could have been, I don't have the exact dates of the encumbrances, but they could have been incurred any time throughout that fiscal year. And then at the end of fiscal year fifteen, that, those monies remained open. So then we brought those forward because we anticipated that there were bills that had to be paid against those. So that's what the solicitor paid using that encumbrance.
So it's almost, if I'm understanding this correctly, that the number when we voted on ninety-five thousand dollars, it was already known that there were encumbrances that were over the ninety-five thousand dollars?
These are addition, in addition to the ninety-five thousand dollars?
I understand, but I, I imagine the purpose of you telling me that it was a prior year encumbrance. So we, we allocated ninety-five thousand dollars for last fiscal year.
Correct.
We're, we have spent three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and you're telling me that a hundred and seven thousand dollars of that was a prior year...
Encumbrance.
Encumbrance, which means it went, it, the, the bill is from prior when we voted for the ninety-five thousand dollars.
It could have been, uh, it could have been a contractual item that we entered into a contract. I'd have to go back and look at the particular encumbrance for you.
So that's how you, that's how you, you calculate an encumbrance, is based on the date of the contract? So if we signed a contract today...
What, what happens is, um, throughout the fiscal year, the departments will enter and requisitions, purchase orders will be formed. At the end of the fiscal year, each department goes back and they will, if they have open encumbrances, they will get what bills they have outstanding. If they have bills that have to be paid against those encumbrances, then they will carry forward those open purchase orders.
Into the new fiscal year, to come up with money to pay.
If they don't have bills, they will send a letter to the finance office, and the finance office will then close out those encumbrances. Then what normally happens is, in the fall, the finance office will go through, and they will run a report where they will list all the encumbrances that remain open from the prior fiscal year. And they will check with the departments then and say, do you have any more open invoices? If they do, they will keep those encumbrances open. If they don't, then they will close out those purchase orders.
So there is, this particular, this outside counsel, uh, line item that we can deficit spend?
You cannot deficit spend. It wasn't deficit spent because...
But there was an encumbrance upon...
Correct.
That line, which essentially would have taken it to deficit.
No, it, it doesn't because what it does is it shows it under the word transfer in. So then it revises your budget, goes from ninety-five thousand dollars, and you add your hundred and seven thousand dollars, and that's what the new budget is.
But that's just the accounting practice of yours. I mean, that, that for all intents and purposes, it's, the budget is overspent by X amount a month.
I respectfully disagree with you, counsel.
So explain, I, I, explain to me how a budget for ninety-five thousand dollars spends three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and it's not a budget. And if that's not an accounting issue, I don't, I, I'm not clear on this.
At the close of fiscal year fifteen, you have open purchase orders that totaled a hundred and seven thousand dollars.
I understand.
The department had open purchase orders. They had bills that had to be paid, that we have, we are obligated as a city to pay, to pay them. That money was year sixteen. So what it does is, it increases what your budget is. It doesn't, the system does not allow deficit spending in the city.
Like I said, I'm not talking about the UNIS, whether or not we deficit spend in terms of the UNIS. I'm asking, we budgeted ninety-five thousand dollars and we spent three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. You're saying the reason why we overspent what the previously approved budget item was is because there were prior year encumbrances. Those encumbrances had to be paid.
There were bills from fiscal year fifteen that needed to be paid. So therefore, the money was brought into fiscal year sixteen, and when the solicitor's office brought those bills, they, they paid with the fiscal year fifteen monies. I can, I can do a...
I understand what you're saying. Where did the fiscal year fifteen money stem from in twenty sixteen?
We carried it forward from the prior fiscal year fifteen.
And where does that show up in, in, in the budget?
It shows up under transfers in.
And where is, what line is that, what page is that?
Um, it shows up right on that line you're looking at, which is the outside counsel line, and then five three zero zero one zero.
So I don't see a transfer in?
Correct. You do see one?
I do not. I look at the budget book.
Not in the budget book. If you look...
Right. So what information available to me, do I, other, the actuals?
I provide the actuals which show the transfer ends.
And where is the transfer from account? Where does that, I see the transfer in. Where does it come from? What line?
It came from the same line, different fiscal year. So what happens is at the close of fiscal year fifteen, that, those encumbrances, which could have been made up on one purchase order, two or three purchase orders, when we close out the fiscal year, in the finance...
You have to reserve.
And we close out the fiscal year, we take that, we take those open purchase orders, and we carry them forward into the next fiscal year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not gonna discuss this budget line anymore. I'm gonna vote against it, but I'm not gonna discuss it anymore. We get a lot of budgets to vote for tonight. I'm not voting for this one.
Counselor Timmons?
Yes.
First off, to you, to the, um, to the auditor, I wanna check, the premium pay is, is actually, there is a person that has attached it.
Yes, that was the president.
Just so we have that distinction.
Yep.
That is attached to somebody. So no discretionary additional dollars there. Previous, obviously, and I think if the previous, uh, veterans, I've got not a crystal ball. We need a crystal ball plus, you know, the chicken entrails or something. Again, it is such an un, you know, a little bit of an unpredictable thing. This is a small matter, but nonetheless, there's lots of small matters. But when we look at the, um, specific, um, line that you, uh, reflected the professional tech, and this is one of those things, I was just going back into the, um, into the, um, actuals again, and I, I don't quite understand. Because I think originally we had FY two, two thousand, uh, sixteen... Because I think originally we had FY two thousand sixteen budget of thirty-five thousand. It looks like we must have had a, was there an additional appropriation made to that at some point? Because we have, it's a forty-one thousand, two, Madam O'Connell?
Um, what line do you want, counsel?
I'm sorry, it's five, three, zero, 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 professional tech.
The revised budget was forty-one thousand, five twenty-five. There were transfers in, which were prior year encumbrances that came in fiscal year fifteen into that line.
Right, so like, the actuals for FY sixteen, seventeen thousand?
The actuals for FY sixteen, we have spent, give the seventeen thousand, oh ninety-four sixty-five. And we have open encumbrances totaling fourteen, one thousand, four eighty-two point eight five. Leaving available budget of twenty-two thousand, nine forty-eight twenty-five.
Here's the thing, since FY thirteen, FY fourteen, FY, this has never exceeded thirty thousand dollars. It's proposed thirty-five. I'm going to move that we cut that by five thousand dollars.
All right, finally I've heard on that one. So, one of the issues here is that the legal process does not run anywhere near consonant with municipal, municipal finance process. You don't go from July one to June thirty. The cases that I've been dealing with have gone over multiple years. One of the cases last year started to heat up in, say, February, went to trial in November. The money that's being spent here is on deposition transcripts, on court transcripts, on experts whom we consult with and/or use to testify. I mean, the money is not subject to the type of cyclical appropriation process that some of the other departments, which I wish I had successfully deferred. All right, you know, will come before you one. Our park, our park director, Mr. Assani, can plan, you know, because he's following the seasonal processes and adapts to the municipal calendar. I'm not planting trees on a cycle. I'm reacting to things as they occur. And, you know, cases happen, and we don't have much say about them. And we don't have much say about how they track. So the money that's being spent on lawyers, we had one case where we were very successful in summary judgment and got all the cases, all the claims against the city dismissed. But that created a conflict of interest scenario. We had higher outside lawyers. And then boom, that budget just explodes. So I would ask for deference from the body. Because certainly all the money is going where it should be going. To people who provide legal services to the City of Quincy. And I think sometimes it's reflective of the fact that in a few particular instances, they're willing to defer payment, which has been very helpful to me. So I, I think that's why the budget is not as neat, the actual budget, I should say, as the one that we placed before you, which is our projected. We can't project what's going to happen. We do our best to. And I think that the mayor has agreed with me that the best approach is to stick with a fixed approach each year. Hope for the best, and then as things happen, we come before you and we report on what's going on and seek the additional funding only when necessary.
Thank you, counsel.
If I can, yes, respond, and I'm not sure. Certainly, obviously, in terms of legal expenses and different things, I've always been pretty supportive. However, this professional tech line item we have just seems to be, I don't know, how long has it been at thirty-five? I know it's the last two years anyway. It's been the thirty-five thousand for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. But if we go all the way back to two thousand thirteen, that roughly was twenty thousand dollars spent on it. In FY fourteen, twenty-seven, close to twenty-eight thousand. Last year, again, FY fifteen, twenty-eight thousand. And again, this current year, great, we're at seventeen. So again, all I'm looking at are trends, and proposing a cut of five thousand, you need to come back and ask for a hundred and seventy thousand. And you get that, I'm certain that five thousand won't be. But again, this is going to be built in specifically into the level, these are the amounts in my mind that, that again, can make a difference in the overall budget. So I just, I'd ask my colleagues to support a cut of five thousand. Again, if there's an issue later on, which there hasn't been for right now four years, and where that would be exceeded in some way, that's fine. But I would propose a cut.
Okay, thank you, counsel. There is a motion on the floor, or the motion in council for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you, Mr. Chairman? Joe, on the outside counsel line, you referenced three cases, of which two are closed, one, the Mcgonigal case is still going. Explain to me now how you project your budget for that example. So, case goes to court, city gets victory, the now is appealed, going back to court, the city has another victory, the outside counsel. So right now, we're in this pending phase, right? Where we're, the ball's in the end of courts and we're waiting. But obviously, any of the action items the contract confirmed is pending. How do we, maybe this is better out of hands for the auditor, of these bills that come in, whatever the attorney's outside counsel bills us for, we're committed to. How, how do you factor that into the budget when you have a case open like that that just keeps going and going and going through the appeal process?
Well, it's very difficult. Essentially, it's not so much a budget prognostication process on my part as the attorneys involved communicate with me about the status. The case you're talking about has been scheduled for oral argument in the First Circuit Court of Appeals. That's going to happen sometime in June. I don't recall the exact date. Well, that went through a period of dormancy where there was no activity. But there was a, you know, there was a cluster activity when the brief went in. Then the other side filed its brief, and we have to respond. So I know when activity is occurring to anticipate bills in a range of X. And then I ask the attorney if we're within the same fiscal year, if they can await payments. So I just come before you one time. I don't want to keep coming back for the incremental payments of bills.
Do we retaliate on that case across the tax year?
Well, I, I know what it's cost, I believe, but I, we're still not done yet.
Right, so I mean, I think last year, the diatonic numbers was over forty million dollars in label fees, right?
Well, then, I don't know about that. I'm not sure. I haven't looked at it in a while, I'm sorry.
Unless, unless you see that, I'd just like to understand, okay, it's coming through in June. We want a specific decision from the court in June, and we've got our oral argument, so it's going to go into another fiscal year. Is that something that you have budgeted for through your outside counsel sufficiently with knowing how expensive that case has been?
Well, then, the firm, the firm involved in that case has handled another very similar case. It was helpful to assign them to the same type of matter because they're up to speed on what they call a section nineteen eighty-three claim. So they've handled two of those for our office that were somewhat contemporaneous. One involved the police department, one involves own. But it's the same legal issue, and, you know, that way we derive some benefit. And that may be where the merger on the numbers is in your mind. Because you're looking at two cases there.
I, what was the other case? So Murphy has two million A. What's the other case I'm handling?
The Thing case, Thing versus Quincy, and then McGonigal versus Quincy.
Right, the Thing, well, through my ward, the Thing, I think came in for one seventy, right? That was more the settlement, or that was the attorney's fees and settlement?
Now, that wasn't all the money from, that was to two firms.
With this, I think, case, yeah. So I'm very specific on the other case.
I understand.
You look back on what the expense has until this has aired. And then, I guess, what would the plan be? So we have budgeted now our outside counsel at nine five thousand. Do we currently have any other open cases that outside counsel's handling?
Right now, no. We still have some wrap-up on, on two cases. Pulling that together now. But in the coming fiscal year, no. Right now, we're going to have the McGonigal oral argument, and then most of the major cases. And there really were only a couple of them, but, you know, they're very involved.
Right, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. So the outside counsel this fiscal year is at ninety-eight million A, so for all purposes, it's done. Right, there's very little money remaining. We are hearing from you now that the McGonigal cases, the oral arguments, we are anticipating expenses. What you're saying is we may wait till bill ends of the new fiscal, fiscal year?
Right, we try to come before you one time as best we're able in each fiscal cycle, each fiscal year.
And are you anticipating that these funds could be expended from the ninety-five thousand budgeted for FY seventeen? Or are you envisioning this as something off-budget you'll be coming into an appropriation for?
The McGonigal case will finish up during this fiscal year, so we'll have to pay...
FY seventeen?
Pardon me?
Well, you'll finish it. You'll have a oral argument that will...
Well, it's going to, they're going to have their oral argument this fiscal year. So when that finishes, we'll have to come back and get that paid.
We'll come back and get that paid in this fiscal year, then we still have that case, it's still kicking into another fiscal year. We'll have more...
For, for wrap-up, what I refer to as wrap-up, depending upon how things go with the First Circuit Court of Appeals, right?
Okay. So if you could just go back to that oral, because I do believe it's motion for the money, Alex.
Thanks, Wes. Okay, going back to this motion on the floor, cut professional tech by five thousand dollars. Can I, please, call for a roll?
Counsel King?
No.
Counsel Quinn?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
No.
Counsel Hughes?
No.
Counsel Forrest?
Yes.
Counsel Lee?
Yes.
Counsel Calmucci?
Yes.
Chairman Paul?
Yes. Okay. Any further questions on the law office section? Counsel Ben?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Chairman, this, oh, no, I'm sorry. It's the next one. I forget. It's the next one.
Any other questions on this? On the favor?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
All right, the next one is workers' compensation. Found on page nineteen of section two and seventy-four, section three. Counsel Ben?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I just, I just want to check in terms of, because I know this goes up and down. This is the workers' comp, workers' comp line is seven oh three, five, seven oh...
Right, well, that's misstated. That's Mr. Walker found in me. I'm trying to get that agenda neutral workers' comp, which is where it's been since nineteen seventy.
As much as you make it dance amongst...
Yes, workers' comp has been out of vogue since the forties, I believe. So, but yes, workers' comp, that line there is the medical.
Correct. And I noticed that, right, and it's, you're budgeting it this year for six hundred and forty-seven, over the five hundred and forty-seven last year.
Yes.
And I noticed that to date, we have spent in FY sixteen about five hundred and four thousand. But we also had an additional appropriation that brought that current line up to about six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. So you anticipate getting, I mean, is it, are you going to be ending up going to place far different than the five oh four of the present act? Is there a reason for that, or what's the rationale behind that?
Yes, surgeries. The medical bills are coming in. Mr. Maxi puts out the word that the fiscal year is ending, we need all the medical bills in. And some people schedule their surgeries, and in other cases, it's the providers getting their bills in in time. But we were in front of you with, I believe it was the last council meeting on that.
Right. So you're anticipating that, that not only are you going to move that from well beyond the five forty-seven budgeted last year, that that's going to be up in this six, six hundred and sixty-six thousand caliber?
Yes, because I, I use the term other. If you're familiar at all with workers' comp, there's a concept called lump summing. It's where they resolve cases after they've been around for a while and someone reaches a medical endpoint. Mr. Maxi's anticipating, being a little aggressive about some of the claims and claims that exist, and trying to resolve them with one payment and getting them, you know, for lack of a better term, because we're talking about issued employees, and I don't want to be disparaging, but you try to get them off the books by paying them a sum of money and having them lump out their claim, they call. They, they basically dismiss their claim, get a sum of money out, and it ends the process. So he's trying to mix that type of management together with management of the medical bills going forward. That's why we increase.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion on the motion, on the favor?
Aye.
Most good. Next one, five votes, is the judgment.
Close.
Discussion approved, discussion on motion. Seeing none, on the favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Okay, next on the agenda is Counsel Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to waive the counsel rule twenty-four. He approached the eleven o'clock hour.
You are approaching the eleven o'clock hour. You all in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Aye.
Aye.
Rule call?
On the motion?
On the motion.
There's a, there's a reason why the rule exists. I know we're making privacy, we have a lot of work to do. But there's a reason why the rule exists. So that public business is done, there's a reason why the rule exists. So that public, public business is, it's not because we have bad times and we turn into pumpkins and can't vote accordingly at eleven o'clock. It's so that the public business is done, so the public can see it. The longer we go past eleven o'clock, the less likely that folks who will be watching at home, who want to be here, have an opportunity. So that's, and I hope, no, that's why I'm voting no. Not because we're not doing important work, but because it's important, it's this important work out in front, so the public can see it at a time that is actually ours.
Thank you for your, for your input. Counsel Calmucci?
Counsel King?
Yes. This is to waive the rule twenty-four. Continue on counsel. Oh, yes.
Counsel King?
Yes.
Counsel DePaul?
Yes.
Counsel Siffen?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Hughes?
Yes.
Counsel Forrest?
Yes.
Counsel Lee?
Yes.
Counsel Calmucci?
No.
General?
Yes. Next on the, on the item on the agenda, it's human resources. Good evening, Ms. Murphy. You can be found on page twenty-one of section two.
I'd also like to bring to your attention, I know you all know, you are working on a lot of things, standing down from HR. Hope he's here.
Thank you for your patience.
So, to begin. As you can see, the only, the only increase is a slight increase in personnel, otherwise we've maintained pretty much throughout.
Move approval on the motion.
Move, Counsel Calmucci, move as a call. On the motion, on the motion.
Good evening. I was asking some questions earlier about the sick leave buyback and, I guess, the vacation time buyback. What, what's the current situation with those? I know you answered the question, you're not taking one of them.
People are capped at, you can carry on to two years plus the current as far as vacation. You cannot take any more with you when you leave. That's the cap you can take. There's no cap on the vacation days in any contract. I'm sorry, excuse me, on sick days in any contract, and it's fifty dollars per day.
And do we know how many in total? And, um, do we know how many in total sick days are currently on the books?
I don't, but I could, I could probably pull that, and I mean, would you, I could break it down by unit or something if you'd like, or?
By bargaining?
Sure.
Yeah.
No one would do that.
It'd be interesting to see that.
It fluctuates quite a bit.
I'm sure it does, and so that's, that's a contractual item that we need to be negotiating.
Correct, right. Right, we were touched to have that, that's right. But also, you only get your, your sick time if you retire, not if you quit or you want other services, Jim.
The reason why I ask is quite obvious, and I think it happened a couple weeks ago, we used free cash to pay off some of the money we've seen here already tonight, at least in one budget. There's an increase, I mean, I think it went from four hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand of a reserve account essentially to, to fund people who are retiring to be paid out. I don't know, I know that there, it's a big cost. Some people ask me about it, the vulnerable, some people ask me, you know, how much time is being carried over, how, you know, how, how is that being enforced, so certainly something I think is reasonable to look at in the negotiations. I know, I think everybody's up, right?
Yes, part of the subtle too, and we're moving forward with others, but exactly.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, glad.
Okay, there is a motion, move approval, any further discussion? Counsel Finn.
I do, you know, they say irrational consistency is the hot bottom of small minds, I really wanna point out appreciation of one aspect of this, um, incredibly supportive of the upgrades that occurred for two people who were referencing earlier, and I wanna point out, so if you can remember, these are actually two people doing the jobs of what were three people, and so I hope that certainly deserve of that, and an incredible job.
Thank you, Counsel, unbelievable.
You all sack, Counsel?
Yes, thank you very much.
A motion on the floor to move, on the favor?
Aye.
Close, you all have it. Okay, next item, Mr. Murphy, is health insurance, which can be found on page twenty-two of section two and page seventy, section three.
Now, last year, we had a much larger jump, as you can see. This year, it's a little bit smaller, and we also, by some negotiated, have a decrease in the city's population, so that's balanced, some of it out, and they're pretty, as you all know, this is a pretty hard and fast, um, the insurance numbers are really, they're, what they are, the GIC sets the rates in February, they're going March, or February this year, and they base it on what's in the current plan for that, for that unisomality.
No, I, I have some questions that I'd really like to, specifically, um, in terms of the medical insurance, how hard and fast is this really at this particular point?
This, it seems to me, it's interesting, I've been looking, I've had a chance to meet with Mrs. O'Farrell here, but as I'm looking at the two thousand and sixteen budget that was set by GIC, they did apply to our open enrollment, and what we noticed in the numbers is that there was a big exodus from Harvard Pilgrim Health Plan, who last year changed from N C, they went from the P D O to the P O S, and different things changed within the plan, so we have a bit of an exodus, so we see a little bit of a fluctuation in the numbers, however, you know, this year's based on last year's, those numbers tremendous jumped from Harvard to Unit Care this year, much larger last year, well over four hundred.
What I'm more concerned about is simply this, now are you, are you telling me these numbers all across, the budget number you have in FY seventeen, and the budget numbers in FY sixteen, that's set by GIC?
Correct, correct. We set the flex spending, and we kept up pretty consistent, although it's been creeping up over the years. The dental, we previously, not this particular year, and we're in for past years, we've kind of roughly underpaid, obviously, we've been a little bit short, which is why it went out to what it did last year, and the projection's pretty spot-on, I believe, unless we've gone to a mafia, this is part of it.
Well, no, again, it's, if we look at FY ten, it was about thirty-three million, thirty million spent, which meant there was three million additional dollars that, again, winds up the tax liability for taxpayers and plaintiffs. FY eleven was the one year it was close, about a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars plus. FY twelve, we're talking about one point three million, if I'm reading this correctly. FY thirteen, about a million, and that was after having some additional dollars even transferred in.
Yeah, the goal is obviously to try and watch it come back, but.
Well, that's been pretty good though, because it's, again, right now, I'm not looking at it correctly, you're at the spot between where I think that it's about, if I'm reading this correctly, we're thirty-six million per a budget of forty-two million, and so that's been the healthcare costs over this last six weeks.
Yeah, we've got, we just paid May, we're in the process of paying May, and then we have to.
How much is that?
I wanna say three point three ten maybe? And then, so usually, I'm switching from three point three and three point four million dollars, I mean, obviously, there's things, lots of people go on a family plan, obviously, your children know that, that thing, so there's.
I mean, you have about available, it's going to be about five million, over five million dollars at this particular point, there's no way.
We're gonna have excess this year, that I think is a product of, and again, that's why I love to talk about this, this is a part of, of that jump ship from Harvard Pilgrim at the highest base plan to Unit Care for the most part, which was a less expensive year, it was a, it was well over four hundred people, so that rate having been set in two thousand and fifteen, when prior to older enrollments, which really, that's based, so the number right now is based on those people in the plans that are there right now. Now, as you know, Harvard Pilgrim is closed, GIC's closing, so now it can actually back higher, and again, it was the most expensive plan, again, they've gone up, the, the GICs have gone up, Unit Care not quite as much, so there's a sort of little fluctuation usually is, although I do believe, and I'm sure when I said with Mrs. O'Farrell, that that four hundred plus, four hundred and fifty person ship from the higher plan.
Through, through, Mr. Chairman, to the audio, is this, is this an immutable line item, and so?
Excuse me?
Is this line item immutable, I mean, is this set by GIC, is this based on law, or is it within our task and context? Because again, I'd much rather have come back and, and the needed to appropriate rather than building based in a level at this point, you know, that's, that's my issue concern. Because you've got, you've got, again, a six-year history of, that is a significant surplus.
Basically, I believe in the Human Resources Department, can come, correct me if I'm wrong, but we receive our figures from a cooking company. I'm not sure if the cooking company gives the figures to the City of Quincy on a project of what the health insurance costs are, if they also include a credit that we receive for Medicare, Part D reversal.
Which is, which is?
Is, we usually receive a credit every year for that. Prior to going on board with the GIC, the city actually received this amount in a revenue line, and it fluctuates each year. I know that this year, we did receive a credit for December, I'm not really sure on the exact dollar mark for that credit, the problem could fluctuate in, it's from five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars. So that could be part of the reason why we're seeing this fiscal year, we're showing a bill of about five hundred and seven ninety-three, we have a minimum amount left to pay, which will average between three point three and two point four million dollars, so at the end of the fiscal year, you could see about one million seven missing out. Oddity, I believe, is what Chris Markey stated, that a lot of people went from oddity to a lesser plan, a lesser expensive plan, and then oddity could be because of this credit we received in December.
But to get back to my basic question, we can cut this.
I believe you can cut it, as long as.
I'm gonna put forward, I'm gonna propose a cut of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the specific line item. I, again, it's nothing of historical data that indicates that that's gonna present a hardship. In the event it does, because again, I'm reminding everyone is that this, again, you say, well, great, false, free cash, and things, but I remind all of you again, the calls you got, remember, that what affects the tax rate is that level, so, again, I would encourage support, I think this is a modest cut, given the numbers that we're talking about, and I don't think it's anything that will put this in any danger.
So, a motion on the floor, cut by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, on the favor, I just have a question for you. Ms. Murphy, does this contact any sort of contractual obligations we have with GIC?
No, I mean, the bills that come in are gonna have to be paid, so should we fall, should we need that to give you that, then I will certainly come back.
Correct. So, motion on the floor, cut two hundred and fifty thousand, the health insurance line?
Counsel King.
No.
Counsel DePaul.
No.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
No.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Yang.
No.
Counsel Calmucci.
Yes.
Chairman Paul.
Motion passes, five votes for. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, folks, is the IT department, welcome Chuck Phelan. The information can be found on page twenty-three of section two, page seventy-eight, section three.
Good evening, Mr. Phelan, good evening, the House of Station, appreciate the time there.
That's all right, that's all right. I bet on the receiving end. Hey, it was good.
Sorry, Cap, I don't think we voted on that budget, I voted to cot.
I don't need to vote on the budget pass. So I don't need.
Yep, so we gotta move passage, on the favor?
Aye.
No? You all have it.
Sorry, Chuck.
Appreciate it. Keep off the table. So, IT is on page twenty-eight of section two, page eighty-three of section three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, all Counselors. Just basically, we run the IT for the city, we do the wide-area networks, we do the internet lines, we do pretty much all forms of communication, we work with the school department to maintain the wide-area network, to do web filtering, content management, and we also run the city's data center, which does the data center for both the police, fire, nine-one-one center, and also the one at Clottington, which we maintain service for all the school functions and city functions and all the different agencies in the city. Basically, we have a, we have a staff of fifteen people, that includes me, I know nine union employees in the staff, who are all very veteran group, who've been with the city for several years, and the other fourteen people are all of the city hall union and supervises you. The budget on the expense lines is a global item, global budget.
I'd make a motion to accept. I didn't want to hear this presentation, but I don't know if I'm gonna.
Chuck's been here before, he knows.
No, that, that's the budget, what you see is what you get, it's what, it all the time, and I really appreciate the management, they're great for that.
There's a motion move passage, and a motion, Counsel Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through your job check, you guys have a conversation every year, I know we're funding IT nearly close to enough as to what opportunities technology provides the community. What last week for you, the city website is something that we funded, and we are honored to be able to launch.
We're probably looking at sometime this summer. We recently went through every department, went through every page, there's about fifteen hundred pages of data, we obviously didn't wanna move outdated pages of modern information over to the new website, so we've just met with every single city department and gone through the website, line by line, and basically have done that. We have a mock website up, that's up right now, that we're just starting to put the pitches in, final touches on it, so I think we're looking somewhere, summer, the early fall is. Basically, what we're gonna be doing with the website is taking it, the current website is not very friendly for, for like, we have an iPad or iPhone or something like that, we're adapting it, we're developing an app that will have people, send them in, and all that is part of the website, we just, right now, we've done basically the grunt work to get it all done, that's what we've been doing right now, and we've moved, we've done the toughest part, right, because we've finished already, just finished last week, brand-new site now, brand-new content we've sent to the company that is putting it all together, it's the one with the website, it will be much more user-friendly than current.
So when you talk about taking pictures, similar to the CCLIP fix, it'll be software specific to our community?
Yeah, it would be very specific.
For the proprietary to our.
Well, it's just for Quentin, this is gonna be part of the website.
So not a plugin, not a CCLIP fix?
No.
For a proprietary, you're asking the website?
CCLIP fix was good when we didn't have anything else, this would be more like the app, you would get, when you go to the police website, along that lines, so it'll be directly, it'll all be all Quentin's information.
So I think one of my biggest frustrations with the city website includes the content management system, and there is opportunity for constituent services, yet it's frustrating for the end user, right, so you wanna report a street light out, so maybe you pick technology, because, well, it's power-related, yet it's actually handled as the mayor's office and the flow of traffic, is that something you're drilling down on as for improvement opportunity? Because I think we've had a trust that it would be great if we're using one system tracking it, I just am looking for that next level technological advancement to person hire and hire and over.
Yeah, this, I mean, that was two years ago, and we just, but it's not, it's not capital of us today anymore, that's why we, and there's a whole new content management system, constituent service is basically what we recall.
I'm like about, you know, using data to track performance in government, kind of the dashboard, you see these communities, like this Comstat, City Stat, you know, Summer Real, Paymiders that they're using, because you could probably look at anything like that in the city.
They're using, you mean like the three-one-one?
No, not three-one-one, like more, you know, Mayor Walsh has like an analytics department, they're gonna track how many calls come in to track fob holes, we even have a goal to fill fob holes for over hours, we know how the things get in, you know, we're gonna use data to talk about, whatever, I mean, whatever the stats are that we're setting up, there's measurable metrics, if they're using technology, I know the Comstat, I even asked Boston has a program, talked about in the past, about setting up and test driving some metrics, I guess I'm looking for some innovation, you know, what's the innovation that we can use through technology to bring, to make something better? And so that's, I guess what I'm looking for, is what's your wish list, what would you wish that we were recording in this budget, because I just see there's a lot of room for improvement there, I think, you know, the media and government, that's, and some of these technology in government, and I, I wanna see those in much in our community. So what, what's the innovation out there, what's our initiatives?
There's innovation like that, there is nothing in there in this budget for that, right? I understand the analytics, I've bent the glasses on them, I've seen what they are. We do some of that now, just kind of informally, but there is no formal structure like the way they're doing it in Boston and stuff, I looked at several different software packages that we have on the floor. We are looking with the capital improvement plan, I've made several suggestions in that. I think over the last couple of years, I've just been trying to survive and get the infrastructure to where it needs to be, the infrastructure really in the city is not where it needs to be to do all these, New York, Boston, New York, Cambridge, they all have fiber going on every single city building, they all have a lot of things. One of the things I've worked with the mayor's office on through the last capital improvement is to be running fiber to all the city buildings to up our bandwidth, because a lot of the stuff comes down to, when you build a house, you gotta put in plumbing, and you gotta put in wiring, you gotta put in this, and what we've tried to do, when we've done new buildings, we put that infrastructure in, but a lot of the other buildings are kind of woefully inadequate, and so unless you have the structure and the things to do, last year, we needed to virtualize. Two years ago, the council gave me the money to virtualize our environment, we did that. There's steps that you have to take before you can get in some of this, the analytics stuff that you're doing, and that's what I've tried to do, especially with the next capital improvement budget. We also have a phone system that's from nineteen ninety-two, and I realize that's not sexy, but when a constituent still picks, we still get an awful lot of phone calls here in the city, picks up a phone call, we're just, we're still depending on a centric system from nineteen ninety-two at a police station, at a nine-one-one sign, we're depending on a, on a outdated, outmoded phone system that needs to be replaced, that is also gonna be in the capital improvement plan, and I have put those items forward. So to get something analytical, kind of nice things, which are, which are great, please, you know, I've been to the M R A, I've been to the Mass Leadership Council, IT Leadership Council, I go to the meetings on a regular basis, I'm at U.S.C. to the, to the. Council, I go to the meetings on a regular basis, I met you last week, to the, um, home insecurity, the technology point. And you, you've gotta have the structure, and that's what I've been trying to put in the last couple of years. And that's where, where, where I'm moving to. So, although some things, like a, like a simple phone, it's not sexy, it becomes probably as vital, vital link as anything like that. We're looking at digital nine-one-one and the police next year, which you've heard a lot of things, you know, nine-one-one, people can't track a call back to somebody, you know, woman's husband dies, which was just on a lot of news stations just recently. That, digital phones will be coming. We need, part of the, part of the capital improvement plan is to replace the phone system in the police station from a nineteen ninety-two version to, to an updated voice-over IP system that can take those calls in from, to cell phones, that can take texts from cell phones. That's the next real step. And really, the, I, we've done a lot of analytics, like with the police department, we've spent a lot.
I mean, that probably happened on your website. They, they are definitely on the innovation.
Okay. No, we, we, the, the website doesn't just happen.
Yeah, okay, so that's a good model, isn't it?
We put them through, because, actually, Joe Patrionis works for my department. Sylvia, who's down there all the time, they work for my department. We have to develop the service farm, we gotta develop the, everything that happens like that eventually comes to us to do it. And that was an opportunity, they had some money, they wanted to do some innovation. So, sometimes I go where the dollars are, and the people are willing to do the work, and we go and do it. Police is obviously a very important, um, when we did the analytics on the website, which we do analytics on the website, I can tell how many people are coming in and going out. We found that the police pages are the most accessed pages in the city. So, they're, they were like, maybe twenty-five percentage points above everybody else. So, when, when the chief came to me and said, "Look, we need to do a website," we said, "Yeah, obviously we do, and the analytics show you need to do it." We went there. We do analytics on, I'll do, I guess, if you're looking to see if I have a formal thing like that, we have, Summerville, Cambridge, they have, they have people that just do analytics on the staff. It's me, myself, and I doing the analytics.
And I would mean specific analytics as far as web traffic. I just mean, uh, the city staff programs, Cambridge is doing, Summerstab.
Sure.
Those particular programs, and those analytics and data is part of it. So, I wanted to come back to your work on infrastructure. I think what people, um, don't see, what a lot of us value in particularly, with both streetworks, downtown development, is that our infrastructure was a major, major impediment to our downtown development. And so, as we're doing a lot of that utility work, conduit work, people are seeing the roads are messed and not seeing work happening, but we're getting that infrastructure ready so we can build out downtown waters, who are in fiber. I think, you know, particularly.
We throw a lot of fiber, while we've had the chance, we've laid a lot of fiber on the area.
And I think, in particular, the district that I represent, right, you've got oversaturated, for example, Comcast market, right? So, my internet out line is at the end of the end of the net, and you're very, very slow speed. So, that's something I look at citywide as to, you know, in Boston, they have open Wi-Fi in public spaces, and I would love to be able to get, to the point that the library lawn, with the Wi-Fi, Germantown, you know, an area with limited access, open Germantown. I'd really love to bring some innovation like that through these infrastructure improvements. And I guess I'm just looking for the innovation and development as to what's the plan. I get it, you're struggling to survive, but in twenty sixteen, struggling to survive should not be what we're saying on technology, because it has such a return on investment.
But I, I think we are looking to go to fiber, and that is part of the plan, we'll be running fiber out of Germantown. Some of these other projects you're looking.
With open public access?
For Wi-Fi. Well, that's a, that's a whole other, that's a whole other ballgame. We, we have to double the size of my data. You, you, if you're gonna do open Wi-Fi everywhere, like, for example, Brookline, and I talked to them, you would basically be doubling this budget right now. So, that's a big touch. So, then, and then when you do open Wi-Fi, there's companies like an innovator up in, uh, Crown Colony, that I've been, been to, a lot of people will do it in a small area. Boston tried to do it.
They did hotspots, right? Some of the playgrounds, right? To the library lawn.
You could do hotspots.
Right, I, I guess, are we talking about that, you know, for example, let's say the Thomas M. Library Lawn, great place, you see the Quincy College building towards the students, that's really their campus. You know, what's the opportunity for encouraging use of our green spaces in an area like the library lawn? Is that something that the department's looking at, expanding that access?
We have that.
Yeah. And I guess my other thing, that I, actually, I probably even have a technology question for a lot of the departments that come forward, is have you reviewed technology needs on a department-by-department basis? Is that then your responsibility or very good old responsibility? So, if there's software that the departments are looking to have, or upgrades that they're looking to have, or technological needs, is that something that they are managing in their budget and say, "Coming to you with," or how, how is that working?
No, they're coming to us with, like, for example, Jay Duke came up with the, the, you know, viewpoint. And, um, we have to set up, obviously, the infrastructure for him to go to the viewpoint. He had old PCs, he updated the PCs. What?
So, I guess that you're looking, talk down to the needs, or the needs kind of add up, and why, why in which way?
Um, we're really looking from the departments. I mean, I'm not gonna wanna tell, like, the chief of police how to do an investigation. And what, what happens a lot of times is the departments will come in, like Jay Duke came in, said, "I have this viewpoint, I researched it." We went out, we did demos, we showed demonstrations by it. A lot of times, what we do is we're the backend. Now, for example, Quincy Public Schools has ASMR. They've decided that this is the best program for their students. I'm not gonna go out and tell an administrator that, "Oh, I think ASMR is terrible." What I'll do is look at number one, is the system secure? Are children's records and student records gonna be secure on that system? Uh, we'll work with what we have. Our actual, the actual backend we have with our servers, when we virtualize, we went from more than fifty servers to ten servers in our, in our data center. The amount of money saved by the city on electricity on putting new servers on, I used to spend fifteen thousand every server. I spend a thousand dollars a server now, because I could spin off a new server whenever I need. When we were attacked with the ransom virus and it came in, I was able to segregate it, spin off a new server. Some of the towns you've seen that have been taken over, they're not virtualized. Um, when they, when they did the standards.
That was a major project.
When they did the standards for the city, you know, what you should be as a city to the state, minimum that you have to require to get grant funding and stuff like that, whether you know it or not, the city of Quincy met every standard. Uh, we're one of the few cities in Massachusetts, too. Cambridge, uh, they have a little more than us, but, but we're catching up to it, because we're trying to do these projects. Unfortunately, with the budget the way it is, I can't do them all at once. What I've tried to do is, if you look, when you get the plan, there's a whole IT plan, it's for five years out, where we're gonna take it. We, you also have problems in the school system, because you have a lot of old PCs in the school system. Very, and it's becoming, becoming a security concern. And there is, and that, that, that capital improvement, PCs, although I won't put the PCs in the classroom, I'll work with them, work with the school IT, we'll get them so they go on the network, so when the kid, when the, when children are going out into anything, you need to provide a safe environment for them to go out. You need to do web filtering, content management. And so, some of the reasons we move a little slower things is because I can't just open everything. I have to be very aware that we have people's social security numbers will fly around, we have children's records, we have criminal records, which come under the whole thing, and Cory Law, there's HIPAA laws as a whole. So, when we make a move, I have to plan it very carefully, and I have to move out. When you go to opening Wi-fis, when you put Wi-fis, and you just open, a lot of towns will just hire somebody and say, "Here, go do it," because you remove it from the city network.
You have the city network.
Yeah, so it's, it, there's, there's a lot to it.
Thank you. I, you know, Chuck, as I say every year, I really wish there was additional funding in the budget, and looking forward to your capital improvement plan.
Well.
I think there's ability to support, as you do, so many other departments, and I just wanna make sure that they have the technology that they need to optimize their functionality. So, with that, I'm just saying, I'm not seeing enough money in your particular budget, because I feel there's a lot more opportunity, and there's a real top notch if we turn on that, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. That was the longest motion approved that I've ever seen.
I'm sorry.
But, uh, the motion on the floor, pass, on favor.
Aye.
Post. Thank you, Mr. Phelan, nice tie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You always wear my Quincy hat.
Yeah, you do, yeah.
Thank you, counsel. It's, it's been, brought to my attention, if it's okay, the will of the body, if we took the, uh, the library out of order, Mr. Phelan, she has a name, has a, a long commute home.
By home.
It's okay. All right, so, we are looking at pages forty-four and forty-five on section two and ninety-five on section three. Who else on this evening?
Sweet.
Yes.
Sally.
Our budget is basically public funded, except for two percent increases for staff salaries. I heard counselor asked earlier about numbers of bodies in different departments, so I can tell you that we have forty-eight employees right now in a lot of the departments, including myself and my assistant director, and then everyone else that is part of the library bargaining unit. Several of those employees are part-time, so it's really more like forty-five, fifteen employees.
Move approval on the motion.
Move approval on the motion, counsel, that motion.
Hi, Miki, how are you?
Fine.
Thanks for being here. Uh, I think I, I tell you all the time, privately and certainly shyly for doing so publicly, I think that the library is one of the best things about the city. Um, our library system is top-notch. I don't think there's anyone that could argue with that, you and your staff, with your record job over there. Uh, and the basketball league has come full circle, and we're utilizing all facets of the, of the library experience. I have a little one who's been involved in some of the programming there, so I, I get on my use of the library and every cell phone residence. If you're not using the library, you're not getting the best bang for your taxpayer dollar, because you really, you really get some great value out of the library. The only question I have for you, I support the budget, the only question I have for you is, I noticed when we did the revenue, um, presentation earlier tonight, maybe like twelve, fourteen hours ago, that, um, the library collections were down. Do you know if that's attributable to?
Um, no. We haven't changed our overdue fee structure.
We do what?
With an annual amnesty or something, right? We do that, yes, we don't schedule at a particular time, I wouldn't surprise people.
Right.
Um, but yes, we usually do something like that about once a year. So, I don't really have.
Okay, fair enough.
Don't have a reason for that, maybe people just have been more comfortable returning their books.
My, my, I'll settle for that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Again, thank you for all the things that you do and to answer your questions. I just, I did have one question, but, um, it's on the, specifically, the five-one-oh-one-eight-seven seasonal stack and Saturday differential.
Mm-hmm.
That hasn't been used since FY fourteen. Let's throw it out.
It, we put it in, um, the year that we reopened summer Saturdays.
Right.
Maybe closed for a few years, because of the, like, cuts, we opened twenty-ten, twenty-eleven. Um, and when we wanted to reopen, it's, it's a bit of a, um, it has to do with our contractor that does library employees, because the store for the library was never open on Saturdays and July and August. So, employees that were hired for a certain date are not required to work those Saturdays. It's voluntary. Uh, and employees hired later are required, uh, as they are all the other ones a year. So, that matters, which is in the budget to make sure that we have enough money to bring in substitutes from other old college library network operators to help us sufficiently stack summer Saturdays. So, it's a bit unpredictable. Uh, what we have found, I think we've had a fair number of retirements in the last few years, so as our, our new employees get out of these, we're having to have more and more of, a large percentage of the staff is now required, contracted, to work their Saturday rotation twelve months a year, which is why we have a duty to use that, uh, money to bring in subs.
You're not anticipating using that this year, I think.
As far as I know, you know, it's been at least a couple of years now, and we haven't had to bring in subs, so maybe we probably don't have to.
All right. I, again, there's already a motion, he, he answered the question anyway, so I, I'm gonna let, but again, I, the reason for this, and it might not seem a lot, but a lot of these spread throughout the budget, and wind up amounting to a lot, um, there's, to me, if you've got a history of, of not having used it, you know, in two years, um, I'll, I'll let it go. I was gonna make it up, but I, I, again, I get concerned, because these are the very dollars that you, you might, you have no guarantee that you're gonna hang back these dollars, right? These, these are free cash, and this is being tied, this is saying, this is your expense right now, and if it's not gonna be an expense, I prefer not to build the, um, into a levy. That, that's the, the approach that I've been taking, but you're thinking that there could be some possibility, and again, with contractual, uh, things you have with your librarians, that you may actually need that.
I, I can't say for sure. I think it's, no. I don't anticipate a change in what my staff is willing to do this summer, but I can.
Okay, well, then, in that case, I'll take it back. I, I just basically, um, at the four thousand five hundred two thousand, I'm in a motion to do that.
Motion on the floor, just cut the floor top five hundred and two dollars from the library.
Actually, we have a motion.
Yeah, I don't accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
You have to vote on the amendment, and then on the actual.
So, I'm friendly.
Unfriendly. It's a hostile amendment.
We need to vote on, you first.
To vote in here.
Why don't you vote on the capital?
On the amendment. Yep.
I, I have proposed cut of the, uh, line item, and it hasn't been spent in two years. I'm gonna cut four thousand five hundred and two dollars as opposed to adding into the tax levy, the freight and certainly the seven hundred spent.
Counsel Kane?
No.
Counsel Devon?
Yes.
Counsel Finn?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
No.
Counsel Hughes?
Yes.
Counsel Faris?
No.
Counsel Yang?
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci?
No.
Chairman Paul?
Motion passes five to four. And now, we're back to, uh, the actual budget, the motion on the floor made by Counsel Palmucci. The discussion on the motion, it's all in favor. Post. Yeah, it's out. Thank you very much, Ms. Allen, I appreciate your patience for, uh, for hanging in there. Mr. Phelan, I know you're up, if you mind, if a little more, I know Mr. Clasby has, I know. He's a little bit of a guy.
I know you're gonna run you right through it.
Mr. Clasby, you're right. You have the number, uh, on your eyes. See you next week. Good. Welcome, Tom Clasby. His material is found in section two on page forty-six, and page ninety-six on section three. Welcome, Tom Clasby, his material is found in section two on page forty-six and page ninety-six on section three.
Good evening, Counsel, it's Mr. Chair, through, through the Counsel Hughes, I appreciate you pointing out my lump view. Although I reside in Central Mass, we have a home here in Swanton and I am staying here. Counsel, I dare some yours for the evening. The statistics that I just gave you, just for your information, uh, they represent numbers obviously from the Kennedy Center. Um, it would give you the opportunity to point out, though, that we often tell that four thousand membership of the Kennedy Center, that really is just a small reflection of the people we serve. We serve actually closer to nine thousand seniors. And that includes our Asian Outreach Work at the Wallace Senior Center, our Shine Program, our, our Center for the Visually Impaired, we also have satellites within New England Home for the Deaf, our Tax Preparation Program, and our Transportation Program, none of those are reflected in the Kennedy Center. There's separate programs that, that we run. Having said that, have any questions on the budget?
Motion on the floor to approve. Any discussion on the motion, Tom, I would just like to say the opposite, you can report to, and get a lot of good feedback on it. And thanks for hanging in there, keep going, go.
Yes. It's eleven thirty. Tom, just to you, I just wanna thank you, you do a great job on behalf of the city and on behalf of seniors. And I know that people of times have called you on behalf of constituents that you provide to some different places, and you've always been able to help, always been, um, willing to bend. And I think that's one of the great things about the County Center, about Counsel and Agent Quincy, is that sometimes there are needs that maybe aren't necessarily prescribed and everything, and you do right now with what you do, and you do your best to meet, um, you know, and tailor things to people's needs. So I appreciate that, and as all, as a friend, but also as, as somebody who works hard at the offices. So thank you very much, it's a pleasure to, to, uh, both of you for the discussion.
Any further discussion on the motion, all of you in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Counsel, because I just wanna point out who my, I have a tremendous staff and volunteers.
Yes, Mr. Fatsy, I appreciate, I appreciate your patience and your willingness to be flexible at twenty, twenty twelve. Jim's data can be found on page twenty-eight of section two and eighty-three of section three. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you, Chairman.
Good morning.
Through you to the counsel.
Good morning.
I'm, uh, first of all, I'd just like to say, um, the city itself has undergone a dramatic increase in development applications and complexity, and I am very proud of the job that the staff has done in the planning department. They have actually been reorganized into some new staff functions and responsibilities, mostly focusing on principal accountability. Uh, I had the opportunity to break the planners on the planning side into three teams. Uh, one group is basically in charge of downtown, the T Station, large developments, Rob Stevens and Carol Chisholm. Uh, then we have the Planning Board, the Neighborhoods, and that's Margaret Hoffman and Susan Karine. Then there is zoning, see, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, the DIF, uh, historical, uh, the Tech Corridor, and the Regional Compact, that is handled by Nick Renes and Maureen Gary. There is no change in headcount, you know, headcount neutral. But you'll see that there's a budget increase of a hundred and forty-eight thousand six forty-seven. Uh, that is necessary because two existing employees were funded with outside, were funded outside the general fund. Uh, money's coming from both CDVG and the DIF. Uh, I've taken those salaries and I put them where I believe, uh, they should be. The addition of Maureen Gary was really replacing Christina Johnson with money on the transportation issues. But, um, the reality is that, uh, all the planning that's going on in the city can be summed up with a current map that I have to share with the council. Twenty-three hundred twenty-eight residential units are currently under permanent and in application. In other words, we have those before us. That does not count any commercial property or hotels. And also the North Quincy Tea proposal is not included in this. So we're having a reasonably robust period of time in the city, as you all know, since this is happening in every single ward, and a map I'll pass out later will show you each and every ward is affected by this. Uh, when we go down the rest of the budget, um, you'll see that basically the, of the one forty-eight, when you add those two positions, it's a hundred and thirty-six thousand five fifty-three, cover those two positions. So it's, it's, it's a rather small increase. Some things that may jump off at you is the contracted line of personal services. Um, this line is seventy-five hundred dollars. It is proposed, or how I would like to use that going forward, and it has not been used in this budget season, is a forty-plus-year employee, Bob Donald, has left us, and, uh, we are going to utilize Bob to come back and help us with our federal audit and with our year-end. And quite frankly, uh, he's helping train somebody on the other side of the house, which is a new financial officer. So that is how I look at that all amount. Uh, and the other one that would jump out at you perhaps is that we have gone from five hundred dollars to five thousand five hundred dollars on professional tech. That is allowing me to purchase, um, the viewpoint software, which is direct, which directly integrates with the Inspection Services Department, they've been using it for years, and now we are going to integrate directly with them since many of our cases are shared. The other thing I've done is I've taken the travel in-state and out-of-state, kind of put them together, uh, reduced it from seventy-six hundred dollars down to five thousand dollars, which technically would be adequate to cover those travel expenses that I foresee and that we forecasted for this year. Other than that, I'm hoping any questions you may have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I have to admit, Jim, when I first saw that increase, I, I had a little bit of concern, but real quick, is CDVG part of what always used to make this such a powerful component, was a certain amount of CDVG offset some of these, correct? Or other type of money?
Yeah, there, there is, but in this particular case, Margaret Hoffman was, uh, being...
Okay, I don't want to get into the, to the personalities, this, the question I have is more, again, are you using CDVG now for other positions that aren't reflected in this budget?
Just, uh, now, the, the, the CDVG side of the house, uh, basically is, uh, is standalone with, with the, with the manner of, uh...
When you say standalone, we always used to have some kind of concept in this budget of what that was funding, which is personnel, that's not reflected here. I'm assuming from what you said, I'm gonna guess that a portion of these are probably coming, or have been taken out of CDVG now and aren't being paid with general fund.
Just, just the one.
And I'm also guessing some of these people may have been supported under the bond at some earlier point, is that...
The, 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 the DIF bond supported, um, the assistant, assistant planners.
So, and again, this was back in two thousand and ten, when I raised that question, is the very reason why, I don't think it's great practice utilizing bond, but, because essentially it creates a structural deficit, absolutely come to rely on, and it's within there, and now we're asking the taxpayers to pick up the tab in relation to the, to that one. But are there other personnel being paid out of federal dollars within your department?
No, there are not.
No? So where does that, have you redirected that into other...
Well, well, the, the primary, um, responsibilities in the department have shifted. And, um, the principal planner that, uh, you know, I have, I have principal planners that actually sign up on plans. And with the departure of Christine Johnson, I lost that, I lost one. So I have, uh, basically, uh, other responsibilities within CDVG are shared. Susan Karine, uh, one of the assistant planners, does participate in, um, a portion of CDVG activity, so to speak. Uh, but, uh, it's, her job is phasing into being the Secretary of the Planning Board, that's where she...
But no money, no CDVG money is being spent on employees, it's not offsetting any costs whatsoever anymore?
That's correct.
And I guess the question would be, is that a policy decision? Why would we do that if we could utilize it around, um, some of those positions?
Because I, I read into what the requirements were for the positions that were being funded, and I felt that they had to be funded from the planning.
I don't know if any of my colleagues have any comments on struggling with this. I think it's a good time to point out, too, that whenever we make a personal type of service cut, we're cutting that bottom line, just to be clear. So the mayor, whoever still has discretion within that, within that line, um, to, uh, to cut wherever they want to make that cut. So if it's targeted towards a specific position or whatever, there's some guarantee that that's essentially less than a half. But I'd be inclined, I mean, I really feel, well, there's roughly, talk about two positions being funded by, by the taxpayers, isn't it, right?
I, I can only speak to the, you know, the next year's budget, I do not believe this past budget. And, uh, I believe it was time to take a look at these and, uh, I agree with Nostia in the sense that I think that we have to, we have, right now the city is in a, um, a very, very busy planning time. I think that the allocation of resources to planning is necessary. Uh, I don't believe that I should bifurcate or I should ask, uh, those monies. You know, I, I'm gonna face a federal audit at the end of the year as, as, you know, the five dollar program, and I want to be able to say that monies are being spent properly. And, and again, it, with, with the development in the city, I think the planning department, uh, can support those, those costs with the monies that, uh, are being generated and in the city camp. And I think it's just keeping the, uh, keep, keeping the, uh, both straight as to who's doing planning work and who's doing, uh, community development work. And, uh, that is the reason these changes were, we discussed them with Matt, felt very strongly, that it truly represents and reflects what is going on in the planning.
You plan on redirecting the CDVG money towards grants, is that it?
Well, the CDVG money, um, is, as, as you know, there are a number of grants, uh, that, that have been, you know, taken in on that side, Farm to School comes to mind and a few others. Uh, we continue to seek all the, all the monies, uh, that we can, uh, through the, but at this stage of the game, I'm assured by, uh, the director of CDVG, basically Sean, that, uh, he's comfortable with the decisions that we've made and that I've made with him, uh, not in a vacuum, and he feels strongly that we can provide the services and continue the services.
I, and this is a, this is another one of these things, Jim, and again, please accept it in the spirit of which it's intended. But we're here tonight, and I've gone through fourteen years of budgets through two different administrations, that shows where the CDVG is integrated into this. And now I have two new positions that were never funded through the budget, now suddenly here in the budget. So you can imagine, um, what that is, and I still really don't feel now that I have a good sense of what the issue is around the CDVG specifically. And I'd, I'd like to know where that, that, where, where the plan is in terms of spending that, that would be, I'd be interested in knowing that. Because, again, I thought CDVG certainly allows for certain administrative structure costs.
And, and there are administrators who ask the, uh, the, if you will, the accounting for the entire department is covered on CDVG, and that is a...
I've taken this a long time, but I, I, I mean, I'm, here's what I'm gonna do, is, I, as a courtesy, Jim, I would request that you hold this. I would like to see some kind of sense of way the CDVG can send to all of us, if, if we could. Because that's where, right now, between cutting a position and understanding this better where I'm at, and I don't want to do anything rash, because I do agree that this stuff is critical, but I just don't have any idea of what, what we're talking about, this is a completely different model, and, and I'm cussing to it, and I, again, I'm not saying it's wrong, but if I...
Well, I, I, I'm unclear as to, when, when you say the CDVG, um, uh, process.
It's through you, um, through you, Mr. Clerk to the auditor, did we not just show CDVG offsets in this budget? This, this specific budget?
I don't believe we actually saw offsets in the budget.
But it was shown that there's, who, who covered certain costs within, and what's...
There are, there are positions that I believe would get paid, and I'm not sure if those resulted in a, I don't believe those resulted in a question.
Well, all I'm really looking for is, you've made a decision, and I'm going to support it specifically, I think it's in terms of where Hines directed you to go. All I'm asking you to do is just document that for me so I can see that. Because I'm not quite clear as to where, where that CDVG is at this point in relation. The CDVG...
Just so I'm, just so I'm clear, when you say documented, you wanna know that the positions, the, the one position that is coming over, uh, what it represented on the CDVG side?
No, I guess what I'm really looking for is whatever infrastructure overhead administrative use, you're currently using CDVG for, and how, how that applies, that's, that's all, because it's clearly, it's definitely a shift. It's a way to, you've made a decision to take it a different way, I, I just need to explain a little bit more what happens with the CDVG.
Uh, it, it's, it's extremely, uh, there are two positions, um, that, again, the accountant, the financial officer, this funded by CDVG. Uh, the administration, as far as the front, as you comment, we have reception, uh, folks, they are covered by CDVG. If, if you would like me to...
Yeah, I, I want to be clear as to see how much the department's spending in relation to that, because this was always the traditionally, the one, because of CDVG, they came in much lower, obviously, the, the departments, because of the integration of CDVG into the mission of, of our planning and development. So all I do, wanna do is get the big picture of planning and development before I decide to add two new positions into the, into this existing budget. That's it, and it's...
Okay, so I, so simply, you just, you wanna see the federal CDVG budget and the people?
I want to see, you don't have to give me the people's names, you can just give me the positions, to break out what you're spending, and that would be fine.
Uh, that's, that's not a problem.
Okay, Mr. Fatsy, it sounds like you're amenable to that going down.
Anything else, anything?
Again, I, I, dying.
So we're gonna move, we're just gonna hold it down.
Hold this?
There's two, uh, two subsequent areas, you can pick one, I'm pretty flexible to work with the body and distribute any information, but we'll bring you back up.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the dock, it is Mr. Welch. Welcome, Barry. Barry's information can be found in section two, page forty-three, section three, page ninety-four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure to appear before you for the thirty-fourth time to present the recreation budget. It's fairly simple this year, uh, the major changes are chapter one fifty-one, the minimum wage law. Uh, this is the third year of the dollar increase, and it does have an effect on the recreation department. Uh, that's our major reason that, uh, we're up a maximum of twenty-four thousand dollars. I'd like to indicate to you that all the positions in this budget are city residents, Quincy residents, so it's a little stimulus package, uh, you put thousands of teachers through college, um, in many, many cases, with the funds that they earn working for us year-round. Uh, last year we had a hundred and seventy-one part-time seasonal employees. Those employees are, uh, paid an hourly wage for work performed. They do not receive any vacation, there's been a sick time involved, which is certainly been a night of my furtive here tonight. But also indicate to you that outside of our budget, we run three hundred thousand dollars worth of revolving fund, fifty-three E and one half, which this council approved some six years ago, uh, was our low-cost programs, uh, that they are self-supporting. Um, we also will have, uh, we've been awarded twelve thousand dollars for our planning grant, which is our tenth year, which is a, um, anti-gang program, which we run during the summer at, uh, two locations in cooperation with Quincy Police. With that, um, I would also indicate one other thing is that the majority of programs in this budget, um, are free to the public. These are our free public programs, and the majority, uh, we have some instances, such as the Cleveland Low Dogs, where there are split costs. With that, I take any questions that you might have. With that, take any questions that you might have.
Questions for motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Giasa, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselors. Last but certainly not least. I'm available, Chris Assani, welcome, Chris. We're going to tackle the cemetery first, which is located on page forty, section two. On section three is on page ninety-two. With that, well, good morning.
Almost about that. Well, good evening, Counselors. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present my budget. This year, the one major difference in the cemetery budget is what I'm seeking to do is to correct what I would say has been sort of an issue of fairness. I have employees underneath me at the park and at the cemetery departments, all of whom, I believe, do extraordinarily important work. And many of these folks have the same exact entrance requirements in terms of licenses and experience, yet for the vast, long time. Some of those folks haven't been paid in the cemetery department what you would expect them to be paid over at the park department. So what I'm seeking to do here, you'll notice that the labor MEO position has been zeroed out, and I have, there's been a subsequent increase in cemetery maintenance man position. So that is the one plan difference in my budget for the cemetery department between last year and this year.
Questions for, please, Assani? Who's to approve?
I think it's a very important thing to do to make me do that, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, Giasa, and Mr. Assani will be on to the park department, which can be found in section two on pages forty-one to forty-two, and section three on ninety-three.
You'll notice that there are a few changes here from last year. Some of them are anticipated over for personnel upgrades. We aren't adding any positions here. We, I, I am requesting that we add a forestry overtime lineup. I find that we get tremendous value out of having a weekend, typically a Saturday shift, with three members of our forestry team. Saturday mornings, we find that there's far less power on the road, power's on the roads, at least until a certain point. It allows us to post, please, no park, you know, no parking signs in some of these neighborhoods, and it allows us to get an awful lot of work done. So that would be a justification there. Roughly, if you pay my staff somewhere in the neighborhood of nine hundred dollars, you get a six-hour shift, whereas if you were to subcontract it out, it would certainly come in quite a bit higher than that. You'll see a reduction in my contracted lineup and a subsequent increase for a tree pruning removal lineup. It's almost budget virtual. It's roughly a two thousand dollar increase over what we were last year. I think it more accurately reflects such an important function that we have. Tree pruning and removal, we subcontracted out on a, on a fairly regular basis. There are certain areas where we don't have the equipment to take those trees down and prune those trees. And as you, as I'm sure all of you know, particularly Ward Counselors, you get the calls, there's a, there's very high demand on us for our forestry services, and it's an area where you can really relieve a lot of people's stress and worry really quickly. And then the last large thing that you will notice that's different from years past is that we have included a one hundred thousand dollar lineup for two tree plantings in fiscal
Any questions for, for Mr. Assani?
I just, again, I notice again, this is one of these things, the five oh one, oh one nine, the premium pay. And again, some of these things, I mean, I don't have a format in this budget per se, but that premium pay, that prefers against non-renewal personnel. I really so, yeah. And you haven't used it since fiscal year thirteen. So I, and I think part of this is because you don't presently, and I don't know, maybe perhaps through the auditor, if you have anybody that's going to be eligible for that. Again, I know it's a little thing, right? As I said, these are, they're a little thing sometimes. But if you don't think you have, again, if that's not something that you have, I just still had it. That would be a cut in of one thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. And I, I don't know why, I mean, nobody's, it's interesting, because I went from two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, sixty-six dollars. All that is the leap year thing. But again, I, you know you have it, you do that, do you have anybody else with premium pay?
I, I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
So I have to say we cut one thousand, five hundred and sixty-six.
Okay, so a motion to cut one thousand, five hundred and sixty-six for the premium, okay?
Counselor King?
No.
Counselor DeLonge?
Yes.
Counselor Finn?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Hughes?
Yes.
Counselor Lars?
Yes.
Counselor Yang?
Yes.
Counselor Kamuji?
Yes.
Counsel, Chair and Board?
Questions regarding the budget? All in favor? Close, if you have, Mr. Assani? And just, I want to...
Motion, Chairman?
Follow to...